Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 18th, 2021, meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We are happy and delighted to have each of you with us tonight. At this time, I would ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is the opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under administrative item number 10 are open for public comment, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please be clear leaning to the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 12 is a public comment form, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordnances reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order, refuse, obey any ruling of the presiding officer, or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, and members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Commissioner May? Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Present.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Present.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the July 21st, 2021, regular city commission meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments concerning this? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. This motion carries six zero. This time, we will have our agenda approval. If there are any changes, our city manager will clarify.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, there are a few changes to the agenda. Removing item AC Dickerson Center Playground Improvement to administrative items for discussion. Move item AE, the Coronavirus Fiscal Recovery Funds, to administrative items. Remove, move, excuse me, item AG, the two-year waiver or permit and inspection fees. Add addendum AI, 351 Basin Street, the USC GA flotilla 44 license agreement to the consent items. Continue item 9A, the Daytona Beach LPGA 711 Plan Development Agreement to the September 22nd, 2021 meeting at the request of the applicant again. Continue 9B, the Third Amendment to Minto-Tomoka Parcel B to the September 8th meeting due to an advertising error by the News Journal. And continue 9E, the Ocean Center Public Use Permit due to an advertising error by the News Journal. And as I stated previously, we are working with the News Journal on those two items. That's it. Thank you.
All right.
Motion to approve the agenda with the said changes.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Henry. Do we have any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, which is our presentation. Item number six A is the Beautification Awards for August 2021, and a member of the Beautification Tree Advisory Board to present.
My name is Marty Grimshaw. I live at Four Grahamville Circle, and I'm a member of the Beautification Board at Large. Mayor Henry, members of the city commission, and Mr. Future, welcome. Glad to be here tonight. It's been a year and a half, I think, since we've been able to give one of these awards. So I'm really pleased. Tonight, we've selected Ms. Kim Gadsden, 1108 Barbara Drive, as the Residential Beautification Award winner for the month of August 2021. Ms. Gadsden is a lifelong resident of Daytona Beach. She served her country in the U.S. Army for 10 years. Thank you. She purchased her home in 2000. There was no grass or plants at the time, but she saw the potential of her new property. Ms. Gadsden takes pride in maintaining her plants and shrubbery. She waters daily, fertilizing every three months, no nitrogen in the summer. The types of trees, shrubs, and plants used for beautification include hibiscus, cleopatra, cannibals, multicolored crotons, purple gingers, white and yellow lilies, pink and green elephant ears, yellow annuals, ferns, yellow persilene, red perennials. Her trees include diamond cup Sylvester palm tree, robalines, and Confederate jasmine. City Commissioner Donette Henry, Zone 5, will be presenting the award.
She works in the wrong department.
Get out of the middle.
And I'm going to add that we're proud that Ms. Gadsden works in the city clerk's city of Daytona Beach.
She works in the wrong department.
I am so delighted to present this award because Ms. Gadsden has been working tirelessly for a very, very long time. In fact, she told me two years ago, and she said, "I think it's time. I think I deserved that award." And I came by, and her house was lovely. And then this last time I came by, it was just even lovelier. And I said to her, I said, "You have done such a fantastic job." So when they came to Neighborhood Watch the other day, they said they had picked her property, and I was just so ecstatic because she has done a phenomenal job. I think she leaves here and goes straight to her yard because then I will drive by, and she's out there in that yard. I'll go by, I'll honk the horn, and she's out there in her yard. She's working in that yard constantly, and she takes such pride in her yard. And she's definitely the kind of neighbor that you want as your neighbor because when her house shines, your house is going to shine. So this certificate of achievement, may it be known that this certificate has been presented to Kim Gadsden for distinguished achievement in residential beautification, city of Daytona Beach, printed, presented this 18th day of August 2021, signed by Mayor Derrick Henry and Commissioner Donette Henry. And we are so thankful for you for doing such a beautiful job in your yard.
Okay, y'all, come over and turn around right here. Send me that, too. Just leave it like that.
I actually work for communications also. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Let me add, I have to add a couple of things there. One, she also had a beautiful oak tree in this yard. And I shouldn't bring it up, I guess, but I won't. But I won't. I'll just leave it at that. But it broke her heart, and it shows. Jenny was so happy to hear of your environmental consciousness. And not only is she got a great, a green thumb, she's also, she's a mean cook. And the city manager says she's in the wrong department.
Meatloaf, the macaroni and cheese.
There's no better way to get rid of stress than working in your yard and making it more beautiful. We also, the Beautification Tree Advisory Board has selected the Living Faith World Ministries at 950 Derbyshire Road as our commercial beautification award winner for the month of August 2021. The property is owned by Dr. Tony Barhu and Pastor Charlene Barhu. Living Faith World Ministries has been in Daytona Beach area for 30 years and was formerly located at 724 South Seagrave Avenue. The Barhus have a five-year modeling plan, are in the fourth year of it. They've added new buildings, new landscape, fencing, lighting, and irrigation system. The many types of trees and shrubs that they use for beautification include magnolias, crepe myrtles, oak trees, crotons, palm trees, and so forth. Mayor Derrick Henry will be presenting the award.
Well, I have known Dr. Barhu for all of those years. And in fact, I know a lot about, quite a lot of those trees. Dr. Barhu, and his wife, and his congregation take great pride in having a great campus. The facilities of that church are being enhanced. As he said, they're on a five-year plan, and the physical facilities are evolving into a dynamic campus for educating students from pre-K forward. And he has an outstanding ministry that is based on service and giving to the community. He is truly a servant leader. And then they beautify the campus with, you see the fencing, and you see the landscaping, and I've actually planted one or two of the trees myself. And so we are immeasurably grateful to have you in our community and just appreciative of the pride that you take, not only in having a beautiful campus, but in everything that you do. I have had the pleasure some years back, as you can tell, of also giving Dr. Barhu a key to the city. He is an extraordinary citizen, and we appreciate you and Living Faith. Certificate of Achievement, may it be known that this certificate has been presented to Living Faith World Ministries Incorporated for distinguished achievement in commercial beautification, city of Daytona Beach, Florida, presented this 18th day of August 2021, signed by Daytona Beach, Zone 5 City Commissioner, Donette Henry, and myself, Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right, we'll now move on to item number seven, which is the public comments by people addressing the city commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. Our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Frederick Brown. Mr. Brown? And on deck, we have Malcolm Williams.
John, did, forgot. John, you didn't have another item?
We have eight E and eight G lists on here.
They moved it today.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak in opposition for items 8B and 8D. And I noticed that you said that you were present today. I'd like to see you be future. And why I say that, we've talked about this in the past, you're allocating an enormous amount of money for long-term commitment to fossil fuels. There are available today technologies such as the Tesla Powerwall and solar systems, which will not only provide more power than what you're paying an exorbitant amount of money for, but will also allow you to reduce your electric bill and have, actually supply electricity at a much cheaper rate, free from the sun. They also have financing plans where you don't have to put any money at all upfront. I would highly encourage the city, rather than planning long-term, in investing in diesel, fossil fuels, which are destructive to the environment, and of course, those of us live right here on the ocean, I have already, I've seen in the last 60 years, the rise. We need to stop that. We need to take a proactive approach. And I know I've talked to you, Mayor Henry, about this in the past, and I am disheartened every time we approve another ICE vehicle, and I'm really disheartening by the huge amount of money that you're approving for these diesel generators. I would prefer that you look into putting in a solar system and a power wall. The benefits are amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Williams, you've signed up for item 8E, also on the consent agenda that's been pulled and moved to the administrative items. Is there another consent agenda item that you?
Okay.
Okay. And that is my final speaker for the consent agenda.
All right, do we have a motion for the consent agenda? To approve?
No.
No. Do we have?
Second.
All right, I'll have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Cantu. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay. We're going to move on then to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is the Development Administrative Services Daytona Beach LPGA 711 Planned Agreement Rezoning Ordinance on Second Reading Quasi Judicial Hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 2.3 plus or minus acres of property located at 2100 LPGA Boulevard from PDG Plan Development General to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Daytona Beach LPGA 711 Plan Development Agreement, authorizing use of the property as a convenience store with fueling facilities and a car wash, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith. And on behalf of the applicant, it's been asked that this item be continued to the September 22nd, 2021, regular city commission meeting.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Moving on to 9B, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Third Amendment to the Minto-Tomoka Parcel B Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi judicial hearing. An ordinance approving the Third Amendment to the Minto-Tomoka Parcel B Plan District Agreement, amending the Plan District Agreement with respect to the commercial area of the planned district located at the north side of LPGA Boulevard and east side of Timber Creek Road by adding additional commercial uses and signage and modifying required building colors, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Third Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and due to an advertising error on the part of the News Journal, is requested that this item be continued to the September 8th, 2021, city commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I will, a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Cantu. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Moving on to item 9C, it's the Development and Administrative Services Property Rights Element Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting large-scale comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163 Part 2 Florida statutes, creating a property rights element, including goals, objectives, and policies to provide that private property rights are considered in local decision-making in accordance with Florida statutes, Section 163.31776I, as amended by Chapter 2021-195 laws of Florida, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We'll have a motion from Commissioner Traeger. We have a second.
Second.
Take a second from Commissioner Reed.
I have no speakers on this item.
All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
The public hearing is set for October 20th. Moving on to item 9D, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Reserve at LPGA Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163 Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 90 plus or minus acres of property generally located approximately 3,600 feet northwest of the intersection of West International Speedway Boulevard and LPGA Boulevard from low intensity urban to Level 1 residential, amending the future land use element, Neighborhood V Development policy, to reduce the maximum permitted residential density of the property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
And I do have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
Excuse me, when you, we were asking that we maintain social distancing, so please try to govern yourselves according to that. What was the, so we have a motion?
We have a motion and a second, and I have no speakers, other than the Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant, for any questions.
Okay, all right. Any questions of Mr. Merrill? No questions? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Now move on to item 9E. It is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Ocean Center Public Use Permit. This is a resolution quasi judicial hearing. A resolution relating to the Ocean Center located at 101 North Atlantic Avenue, approving an amended and restated public use permit to incorporate and consolidate previous terms and conditions and establish additional terms and conditions related to the conduct of outside activities at the Ocean Center, amending an interloco agreement between the city and the county of Volusia approved by the city resolution 17197 for consistency with the amended and restated public use permit and providing when this resolution shall take effect. And due to an advertising error on the part of the News Journal, it is requested that this item be continued to the September 8th, 2021, city commission meeting.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May. Bob, do we have to, we don't have to advertise with the News Journal anymore, do we?
No.
I've had to do some research on this because you do have to advertise with the newspaper of general circulation throughout the area, and there is a new statute that was passed recently that would allow online advertising only, but that doesn't come into effect until January. So after the first of the year, I think we'll be looking at other alternatives.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Moving on to item 9F, it's the Development and Administrative Services Second Avenue Plaza Temporary Outside Activities Resolution. A resolution allowing temporary outside activities for property located at 560 Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard during Biketoberfest 2021, establishing conditions, providing for violations and enforcement, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
I have a motion, what was the second?
Commissioner May.
Miss, motion, Ms. Traeger, second by Ms. May.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments, the speaker?
I do have a speaker, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Patricia Hurd.
Patricia H. Hurd, 822 Vernon Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. Thank you for passing that at the moment, but I have something that I would love to say. I'm really concerned about the amount of fees, the money, that the city is charging people like me to use their own property. I pay taxes, I pay all my bills and everything to the city. I do understand that there might be a fee for special events, but for three days, $1,100. And then you turn around for the 10-day event, and it was $1,100 then. I don't get it. During, we closed down early 2019, and from my heart, I gave my vendors two days' fees back. They are trying to make ends meet even now, coming back to our city, are setting up, if they come, hopefully they will, and setting up. And I wonder, what are we giving the vendors who have gone through COVID-19, trying to make ends meet? And they are having problems, but they still come into Daytona enjoying whatever is left. As I said, I am really concerned about me and others who might be going through this, paying the city $1,100 for the use of their own property. I pay my taxes and everything else. So I'm asking you to take a look at the fees that you are charging me and others for these events. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That was my only speaker on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know how true this is, but I was told by a business owner that there was a commitment, a verbal commitment, nothing in writing, from the deputy city manager when we did shut down for COVID for the SAMA event, that there would be a relief in fees. And it's my understanding, just as Ms. Hurd has said, everyone still had to pay the same fees. I don't know if there's any validity to that.
Mayor, Jim Morris, deputy city manager, no ma'am, there's no validity to it.
Okay.
None. Anything I'd put like that would be in writing, it would be to everyone and not without the manager's permission, and probably not without the commission's consultation. People love to create stories without any validity to them at all, and that's certainly one.
All right, I'll tell Ms. Himes you said that.
Thank you. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Yes, there's a lot to say about Bike Week. And there's always a lot to say about Bike Week, and I will hold it off until a little later in the meeting. So we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any other questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Well, now move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item 10A is the Development and Administrative Services Land Development Code Text Amendment Outside Activities Associated with Bike Week and Biketoberfest Master Plan Activities. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending provisions of the city land development code relating to temporary outside activities associated with a festival, amending LDC Section 5.4(c)(11) to revise standards and procedures for review and approval of such activities. Amending Land Development Code Section 10.4(b) of the LDC relating to civil remedies and penalties for consistency with the revised standards and procedures referenced above, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu, second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments?
Yes, sir. We had a rather interesting email that came from Sandy Murphy regarding... We had a rather interesting email that came from Sandy Murphy regarding this particular item. And I'd like for, I was speaking with the manager prior to, I'm sorry, speaking with the attorney prior to the meeting in regards to some of the concerns that were identified. I'd like for the deputy city manager to address those if he's had an opportunity to see them.
Yes, he has, and he made some responses back.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Your court.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor Commission, Jim Morris, deputy city manager, I'm referring now or replying to the Sandy Murphy email, and you're getting a handout which has handwritten response. I only got this today and prepared it so that you would be able to look through it. And so you will see as you receive it that the things that Ms. Murphy has raised are addressed. I'll wait for just a minute until you get those so you can see the writing.
I also received a phone call from a business owner, and they had one or two questions I'd like to address them following this.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you're ready. So Ms. Murphy has gotten different things that she quotes, and the first part is, I'm going to pull this down, section 3C referring to temporary outside activities. And what you will see outlined in my response is that her point stated is incorrect. TPAs are permitted on your property as something, it's a special promotional event, anytime during the year. Some businesses that don't qualify for the Bike Week master plan have previously used TPAs as a means to have outside sales at their property. The TPA does not limit the business, the business limits the TPA. So if you have products that you sell inside, your TPA lets you sell outside what you can sell inside. But Ms. Murphy states the point as if the TPA somehow restricts the business, and she refers to, in terms of stopping coffee shops and that sort of thing, that's simply not the case, it's not how that's ever worked. Probably the easiest example to point to is one that y'all are well familiar with, which was the old barber shop. It was fixed up on Main Street, it was never really an open store, but the people maintained sales facilities inside with a couple of t-shirts on display, and that was really a Bike Week trick that a lot of businesses did. They maintained a business license through the year to sell those things they wanted to be able to sell outside pursuant to a TPA. So the way that it operates is you've got zoning that allows you particular uses. If you've got an active business, you can pull a business license consistent with the uses allowed by the zoning. Then, even though you probably don't sell a single t-shirt all year long, because you have the license, you've had things on display, and technically you've offered them for sale, you can have a TPA. But you could have a coffee shop selling t-shirts as far as that goes, if they offer that during the year pursuant to their business license and presuming their zoning permits it. I haven't tried to go through the different zoning categories, but the fact is that she has the thing turned around. The TPA doesn't limit the business, the business limits the TPA. And that's really the first point.
Let me ask you this, sir. What she was trying to get at is the idea that if I own a coffee shop and I don't engage in that essentially nefarious act of pretending to be a certain type of business, I should then be allowed to do that even without that sort of farce.
So the secondary point to that, because she focuses on TPAs, and that's what I focused on, they have, all the businesses on Main Street are within the Main Street Bike Week map. So if you are within the map, you have the ability to participate in the Bike Week master plan. And you can do things that are allowed to be done pursuant to the master plan in your, on your property if you have the room to do it. And that's what you see during the year with the Bike Week master plan, if the properties are within that area defined by the map, they're able to do things that they ordinarily don't do during the year. That's a big part of the way the Bike Week master plan works. So then you participate in the Bike Week master plan. And that's, so you've got flexibility both ways. The ability to do business in Main Street or on Main Street during the year is really driven by what the people offer for their business and whether or not they create a market for it. Some do, some do not. And the vacant properties ordinarily have to be contiguous to things that are associated with them. And as I go a little further, there's reference to parking. You don't see paid parking on Main Street. It happens off of Main Street, the reason being, the better market for the use on Main Street is the activities that you see as a normal part of Bike Week. The only lot that is on Main Street that is limited is the county's lot, which they have static display because they don't have a business and they don't have anything on that land, but they're allowed to do static display with no sales whatsoever permitted from that particular site. So that is, the outline is there in terms of the reply, and I don't want to take too much of your time. I actually picked up on my next one a minute ago in terms of parking lots occurring on Main Street. Now, the commission did agree to expand the Bike Week master plan map to a kind of a block of property north of Main, and you've seen some of the property owners here in prior meetings where they said, you know, we want to be able to park on our property. And in that, you actually have a requirement that says it'll be on unimproved property. And that, the reason being that the idea was to preserve the parking lots for the business, but this neighborhood is in such a location proximate to Main Street that they're overrun with people parking on their property if they aren't there to protect their property and secure it. The compromise the commission agreed upon with the property owners was to allow those businesses, which is a very small place, businesses in other open properties, where they have open space, undeveloped land, to have parking on it during Bike Week, and it's paid, and that's what people do. Another part of that thought, I think, was to allow some mitigation when you live that close to that kind of event that will disrupt your business and your residents, to allow those folks some opportunity to earn some money doing that. And that was a commission response to complaints from those property owners. The last one is a picture of a property which is actually, you can't tell it from the picture that Ms. Murphy has, but there's a convenience store in another use on the corner of Halifax, and it runs, so it's Main, frontage on Main, touching Halifax opposite Brooks Cleaners, and it runs over to Peninsula. The parking lot in this picture is something that is shown in Ms. Murphy's email. The way that we go through the Bike Week master plan process is, the code enforcement gives us a litany of violations or nonviolations in respect to the properties that are in the master plan. This particular property was cleared prior to being processed for the master plan. But the city also has a policy where if you had property in violation, and let's presume for a moment this piece is in violation, you have the opportunity coming up to the time of the event, whether it's Bike Week or Biketoberfest, to bring the property into compliance. And that's actually been an effective tool. The barber shop that I mentioned a little bit ago, you probably remember when it was a laundromat, it was a horrible looking place, and that particular property owner stepped in one year realizing they were being left out, and probably within about 60 days, brought full code compliance to their property, repainted the building, worked the thing over completely to get to where they could qualify to do business by Bike Week. So the tool of being able to qualify by curing your code violations in advance of the event has been successful. So the information that I have is this property was cleared by code to be in the master plan, but if you presume for a moment that there is a violation there, the violation would have to be cleared in order to participate as a part of what they have requested in their Bike Week master plan, which in this case is paid parking. Let me just make sure I've covered it all, Mayor. That really covers it in terms of responding to Ms. Murphy's correspondence. Commissioner, I'm sorry, sir.
Just be clear, because I want to make certain that point number one is that if I own a coffee shop, as she illustrates.
Yes, sir.
I don't have to do anything else. When Bike Week comes up, I can open up and sell leather if leather's being sold next door.
You can sell whatever you're licensed for inside. It's inside your business, and then if you sell inside, and you can have a license and keep it there and hang, you don't even have to display. If you're licensed for it, you could open the door outside and do something outside if you've got room for a TPA.
What is the disadvantage to just enabling, because this is all permissive?
Yes, sir.
What's the disadvantage to just making it permissive for folks to do that without that license for that particular time?
I don't necessarily think there is a disincentive, but if you look at the methodology, the methodology that has evolved over time, first you had the Bike Week master plan, and it allowed people to do things that you don't ordinarily do during the year for business purposes. It's revenue-driven, certainly, but it's also festivity-driven because it creates something that people want to come to and see. The TPAs actually fall under an entirely different category. TPAs you're allowed to do anytime during the year. I think the maximum number of days you can have a TPA in a calendar year is 21 days. I believe you could use it all up in one swoop if you wanted to, but you can use some here, some there. And TPAs are something that prevail citywide. From a historic perspective, and I've been around long enough to remember the history, you go back actually to the gift shops and so on, they had a bunch of stuff piled up on the sidewalk. They had seashells, they had all sorts of stuff piled up outside, and it really had become an encroachment on the ability of the public to travel, and the outside display of things became a problem in the city. It began with the gift shops, but it was with other stuff, too. There used to be Bill's Fruit Stand out on 92 opposite Speedway, had stuff all over the parking lot. So at some point in time, the commission elected to say, we really want to limit outside display, and there is a limitation in the land development code to limit the amount you can do outside display, in part because of pedestrian movement and so on, but also in part as it relates to just the overall tackiness of a bunch of stuff just spread out across your store. So from the TPA perspective, it allows an opportunity to do sidewalk sales, that sort of thing, for a limited period of time, and people often choose on Main Street, if they don't have another option, to be in the master plan, to use the TPA approach for that. If you look at SAMA, SAMA uses, this is B Second Avenue, SAMA uses public ways and does their event, which is a public event, on the sidewalks over on Second Avenue. But it also contributes to the participation of that part of town in terms of festivities with the Bike Week events, the different property owners there and so on. It's just set up differently in the way the buildings are all built to the sidewalk for the most part. Ms. Hurd is an entirely different class altogether. She has a separate permit that deals with her particular property, which happens to be mostly open and have room away from the sidewalk. If you go a step further, Mayor, and I know we've talked about the art gallery and permissiveness as far as that stuff is concerned, there may be other things to do pertaining to Main Street to create, and to Second Avenue as well, to create sort of a special district as it relates to shopping and so on. Not that it doesn't, it's already created as special districts, but if you think there are other things that need to be done to be more permissive to encourage businesses, that's not something that the staff would say yes or no to, really have to go through the idea and have the commission say, do they think it's a good idea or not? But the rules as they currently stand are the product of many years and evolution, and those are things that both you and the staff have inherited in their current form.
Okay, and I'm done, but into that end, that's why we do need to take her up on the idea of reviewing the master plan. And I mentioned this, I think about a year ago, that we needed to have a comprehensive.
Yes, sir, you actually have it coming.
Yes, it's coming. Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Good.
Yeah, I would say, in all fairness, Ms. Murphy's comments and what you're going to see, I don't think Ms. Murphy will find it satisfactory, that there will be other things that would probably be discussed, and I'm presuming something on her point, she didn't tell me that, but based on the tenor of the discussion, I would expect that.
And I do, too, and there are many other things I think that a lot of people have as it relates to concerns with it.
Yes, sir.
So, okay, good, as long as it's coming, because it has been.
It's ready for commission consideration.
And we will make sure that it is something that the general public will have access to look at in our partners before it presents to you all.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, we have other questions?
I know you do. If I might, Mayor, just before I come to Mr. May, it's actually coming up on your agenda tonight, it's coming up just now.
Okay.
So, excuse me. Yes, ma'am?
Not, yeah.
It's not on tonight?
Yes, yes, but it's the, the one that's coming up tonight is not dealing with all of the questions that people had that we were not going to be able to present in time for the one that comes next year. So there is one that's coming up, but.
This, this one is, the one that's on commission consideration isn't for Biketoberfest, it's actually to establish a new set of rules that would, if you pass it, would be in place for Bike Week 2022. Yes. I'm sorry. Is that clear or not, sir?
It is clear, but it's not what I anticipated, because we really haven't dove into that. I.
Understood.
Go ahead. So we need to.
In that event, there's continuation as well, so.
Yeah, that needs to be continued. Okay.
I had to do with appeals process. Is there an appeals process?
Yes, ma'am.
That's been taken away.
There is, no, it's in the code, it's actually moved to the land development code, and it's stated in the land development code. So the appeals process is intact, the substance of that is still in place, it's just the way it's been reorganized in the rewrite. That will be on the next agenda item, but it's actually in the land development code.
Okay. And then moving forward, if people apply late, how are we handling that for the next time round?
It's going to be up to the commission. We have a deadline that we use, and the commission can give us direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor? Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I may, so this is an ordinance amending the LDC on first reading. It'll come back for second reading. Your next item is the amendment to the master plan guidelines. That's a resolution. If you wanted more time to consider those, we could move that to the next meeting and approve them together.
I need, I think we need a good bit of time, and we need to do a workshop and sink our teeth into this. Because if we're going to change Main Street, and I, I mean, at the meeting a month ago or so, or maybe the last meeting, I mean, we asked staff to bring back, you know, something that's, we're going to spend, maybe we may end up spending $3 million to redo Main Street. So we need to make sure that if we're going to do that, that we have a Bike Week, a master plan that reflects the values that are, that we have now. You know, it doesn't throw out everything that we've done in the past, but, you know, now is the time for us to expect and to demand that the businesses also, you know, do more year-round, and we have to find a way, and I have not seen that way. I ride Main Street at least once a week, and I'm just not happy. I mean, I'm not happy with what we have done, but I'm not happy with what the businesses have done and what they continue to do. And if we're going to reach our aspirational goals of greatness, then now is the time to not only make a financial commitment, but to also make a policy commitment that demands that everybody comes along. So I think November is enough time, and.
It's on the next five.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we got it.
I just wanted some clarification for my business constituent. We still have the 250-day rule in place, correct, that you've got to be open?
No, ma'am, it's actually been redefined by the way the city attorney applied it to be a business that is.
We make it a year now.
A year.
To be in business with regular operating hours with staff present for a year. That's much easier to enforce than trying to count 250 days.
And it's in the definition of a permanent business is the way that it's set out versus, previously it simply said 250 days, kind of just in the wide open. So the definition of a permanent business, which is the qualifier to participate, is what the city attorney just explained.
So does this mean that fewer businesses be participating? Because right now, as the mayor was suggesting, they're not actually open, they have to be open.
So the change actually was motivated in part by complaints from businesses that the 250-day period was hard to fairly and equally enforce. And I'll probably yield to the city attorney if he wants to elaborate further in respect to having an applicable standard that you could apply to all businesses. So the businesses that do business year-round, I think, were concerned in part that you kind of had handpicking of time periods and then an inability to identify whether they truly were open or not. Let's say we open at four and we close at 11, there's nobody around to see if they're still open at 11, or whatever the case might be. So that the standard is actually intended to be, one, more equally applicable to everything, number two, to be something that if you're truly going to be a permanent business on Main Street, that you actually operate in a year-round fashion on Main Street, and you can identify that through the definition. So the effort was to take the existing tools, refine those tools. I realize that we will be going further, but the intent was to take the existing standards, clean them up, and deal with things such as penalties for failing to comply, allowing compliance and so on, working that stuff through to make it where you encourage compliance, you're not overly penalizing people and coming through that way, which is a product of the different things we have heard staff-wise in respect to commission discussion and other issues that we thought the commission wanted to have addressed.
And just for clarity, when does this three, when does this year-long policy begin, and how will it impact people for Biketoberfest and also February next year?
Well, in terms of when it takes effect, it will be if and when the commission passes a new standard. Secondarily, I would look at it in a normal business year, which business calendars typically occur in October when you renew your business license. And. And in terms of, and I'm also, I would say, I'm partially guessing or extrapolating for the answers because we haven't established the policies yet to complete that. But it's a new way that we've been, been different from what's been done in terms of not 250 days, but rather permanently year-round licensed business.
Mayor, I would suggest with regard to the LDC tax amendment, which you're considering now, that you continue that, because these tax amendments for outside activities permits kind of goes hand in hand with your Bike Week master plan. Those two work together, along with the TPAs. And we've talked about changes to the TPA requirements as well. If your intent is workshop, those should all be brought together so you can consider all the rules together and have a uniform, you know, guideline and rules that work for these events.
I certainly would agree with that. And we actually had created something to try and demonstrate to the commission, because they aren't, you see the pieces, it's like the people who grab the part of the elephant, what part did they get? So we'd actually worked on something to try and synthesize the different pieces to make it easier for you to see. I think the city attorney's suggestion is a good one.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We would need a motion.
Can you amend?
So right now, the motion to approve was Commissioner Cantu and Commissioner May. So if they want to amend their motion to.
Continue it until.
The two meetings in November are November 3rd and November 17th.
And we could just table it as well, if you want to do a workshop, if that's your directions, we'll just table it, we'll have the workshop, we'll bring it back to you as a new item, because there'll likely be changes from what you've got here anyway, which means we'd have to go back to planning board, et cetera.
Well, also, you have to keep in mind, and I think it's taken this long to get here, so if there is a delay, I don't see it as a tragedy, but with the way that the events roll on to one another, the next one comes rolling up pretty quick. So what it may mean, depending on timing, is that you don't put these new standards into effect until Biketoberfest 2022 versus Bike Week 2022. It all is a timing question, and I'm not trying to say do or don't do anything, I just want you to be aware of that as you consider what to do.
Just, 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 I'd say just table it and then with all due speed, get the, get the workshop moving so we can give the, because it's got to work. You can't do it haphazardly, but I do know that we want to see this sooner than later. We'd like to try to.
Understood, understood. I just didn't want you to be surprised by that fact.
Is that?
I just don't think there's enough time. We have Oktoberfest coming up.
Then Biketoberfest will be back.
Right, and I think we should just have a workshop after we approve this and go forward. But that's my.
No, ma'am. No, no, no.
This 2022.
The soonest it would go into effect, assume you did everything right now, the soonest it would be, would be Biketoberfest 2022. On the other hand, assume that you lose time because of the need to work things through, make sure it is what you want it to be. You'd simply review Bike Week 2022 with the current standards, and Biketoberfest 2022 would be with the new standards. And in a lot of ways, that probably makes a lot of sense, just from the standpoint of everybody's ability to prepare whatever they need to do, whether they're merchant or regulators, to do what needs to be done, and property owners as well, so they can react as well as give you input.
Yeah, just give people a little time and fairness. You're saying, okay.
Mayor, thank you.
You amend your motion to reflect that?
You have a secondary motion to table, which can be seconded and voted upon.
Okay. Do I have a second? Who made the motion?
The original motion to approve was Commissioner Cantu, and the second was Commissioner May. So can they amend their motion to table?
They can amend their motion to table, that'd be fine.
Yeah.
I amend my motion.
Okay.
All right, we have amended motion from Commissioner Cantu and amended second from Commissioner May. Any other comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries six to zero.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item 10B, which is the Development Administrative Services Amendment to the Bike Week and Bike, Bike Week and Biketoberfest Master Plan Guidelines Resolution, a resolution amending the Bike Week and Biketoberfest Master Plan Guidelines to modify existing guidelines and add new criteria for consistency with the current practices for outside activities associated with the festival. And do we want, need a motion to table?
All right. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Henry to table. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Manager?
I'd just like to say that we will get with Mr. Morris and Ms. Rose to coordinate the appropriate discussions and meetings to bring something back to you all the second meeting in November for a workshop. But by that time, we will have provide, allow for citizens to provide input to that group of individuals as well, and those groups that work on the master plan through the chamber and stuff. So I know Rose and Jim will be ready to discuss and see what we can bring forward. And if any citizen has any ideas, send that information in so we can make available to you all during the November workshop.
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments? None? Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, moving on to item 10C, it's the Development and Administrative Services Biketoberfest 2021 Master Plan for Private Property Additional Applicants Resolution, a resolution relating to Biketoberfest 2021 Master Plan for Private Property, approved by Resolution 2021-241, approving certain additional activities as part of the master plan, subject to conditions and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Trager?
No, no, no.
Commissioner May? Oh, okay. Second from Commissioner Cantu.
And for the record, Commissioner Trager has filled out the Form 8B Memorandum of Voting Conflict for County, Municipal, and Other Local Public Officers. And she marked the special private gain or loss for item 10C. She's part owner of the properties involved.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have questions or comments?
And I have no speakers for this item.
Okay, no questions, no comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, five, zero.
Okay. Moving on now to item 10D, it's the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Reserve at LPGA, rezoning to Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 90 plus or minus acres of property generally located approximately 3,600 feet northwest of the intersection of West International Speedway Boulevard and LPGA Boulevard from PDG Plan Development General and Belushi County A2 to PDG Plan Development General, approving the reserve at LPGA Plan District Agreement, authorizing use of the property to allow a multifamily development with a maximum of 560 residential units, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of licenses in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
I, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I do have Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant.
Same question I always have when the plat comes through, are we building out first or we're going to have a bond?
I'm sorry, they can't hear you.
Oh. Can you, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah. Now, this, this application isn't for a plat, this is going to be for a PD rezoning? Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, the question has to do with sidewalks, Dennis, and so I think you're prepared to answer that.
Yeah, well, if, in a particular project like this, you probably won't see a plat, because it's going to be a single lot development. So what you're going to find is, there's not public streets in here, there's not streets, there's driveways. But you don't find the typical development with sidewalks that you might normally find sidewalks on both sides of the street, because it's just not developed like that. What we do for a development like this, a multifamily development, is we make sure that there's a sidewalk network within the development that allows pedestrians to get safely from point A to point B to point C, all the way out to the, the road that fronts the property. So they'd be able to access all the way out to the road, in addition to a requirement for a sidewalk along LPGA Boulevard from one side of their property to the other side of the property. So there'll be a complete network of sidewalks within the development.
Does the PD waive any sidewalk requirements?
No. It does not waive any of the requirements, it has to meet all code requirements.
That's good. Okay.
I'm sorry, were you the second then? You were the second, Commissioner Cantu? Okay.
Okay.
It was moved by Commissioner May, I didn't get, she's second, okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. No further questions or comments, we'll entertain a vote. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries six to zero.
The public hearing is set for October 20th. Moving on to item 10E, it's the Development and Administrative Services Development Loan to Beneficial Community Partners Resolution, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Daytona Beach, Florida, approving a $460,000 loan to Beneficial Community Partners to help finance beneficial's development of an 82-unit workforce housing apartment complex, Midtown Manor, on approximately 2.7 acres of real property located at 223 Martin Luther King Boulevard, subject to conditions of the loan commitment letter, authorizing the city manager to sign the loan commitment letter and other documents needed to give effect to this resolution, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
And I would ask that your motion include the same changes that were made at the CRA meeting, 2% interest over 15 years, and that costs related to the loan only be dedicated to hard cost?
I do have a question, sorry. I meant to ask the question earlier, let me know when I can ask it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have amended to reflect the earlier, and do we have a second? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just want to put it on the record, please. What is the developer fee involved here, please?
So we're able to get 15% of the total development cost. So the total development cost, roughly $19 million minus land, you're looking at roughly $2.2 million. But we have to defer 1.7 of that to make up a gap we have. So you're left with a little under $600,000, actual paid-out developer fee. And it's not something we get right up front, we get it along the way, after we hit certain milestones in construction. So it's, looks like 2.2 million, but like I said, we have to defer 1.7 of it.
And again, this is sometimes with the people at home, your intent with this, and I'm sure you're going to say it is, I hope it is, is you're going to be onsite, I read that, managing it, taking care of the property, taking care of the community.
Yes, definitely.
Managing the people as best you can in their own best interest.
Yes, and if you'd like, Olive Grove in Ormond Beach is one of our developments. If you'd like to take a trip there or walk around it, please let me know and I can have that, that done.
If I might interject, Commissioner May, you weren't here when we initially started this discussion with Beneficial. And I've actually visited that site. And, and the ironic thing is, I actually went to dinner there, maybe two years prior, where I had a friend that resided there. And it was on the side, I was like, I think I've been here before. But I never considered it an affordable housing complex, because it looks so nice. They have management on-site that, I'm going to use the word, controls the, the facility. It's neat, it's clean, it's pristine. There were amenities there, a clubhouse with a computer room, a workout room, a laundry room, if you didn't have the hookup in your, the hookups were there, but if you couldn't afford the washer and dryer, then you could go there to the, the clubhouse and do your laundry. There was a pool there. I was just really impressed. I called my girlfriend during the tour and said, I met this place called Olive Grove in Ormond, is this where I came to your apartment for dinner? And she was able to confirm it, and I never would have thought that's what it was. So I was really pleased when Beneficial got involved after having seen that property. And I know for their sake, they want to maintain that integrity with their name, and they will make sure that on Dr. Mary McLeod, but on Boulevard in Zone 6, that it will be the same as it is in Ormond Beach. That was my case.
And, and we have, actually have, you know, investors that buy these tax credits, and they, we actually have to have inspections every, a couple times a year on the property for the development. So we have our investor that comes and inspects the, the building and makes sure it's up to code, because that's how they get their investment, the investor, they buy our tax credits, and they get it over a 10-year period. Well, if it's out of compliance, then we're, we can lose some of those tax credits. And if they do, the investor's going to make us pay them back for, for that investment. So you got to make sure it's maintained.
Any additional questions? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously six to zero.
Thank you.
Now move on to item 10F, it's the Development Administrative Services NASCAR Special Event Approval Resolution, a resolution authorizing a special event permit to be issued to approve an off-road motorcycle NASCAR racing event from January 7th, 2022 to January 9th, 2022, on approximately 136.4 acres of property, generally located west of Jimmy Ann Drive and north of the intersection of Clyde Morris Boulevard and Bill France Boulevard, in accordance with Section 5.4.1.4 of the City Land Development Code, establishing conditions and providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Trager.
I do have one public speaker on this item, Mr. Malcolm Williams. And then I do have Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
Good evening, everyone. I had, came with my list of, of, of everything, and I realized it's going to get approved. But I do want to just note that I'm not in favor of the event. I speak on behalf of people that actually live in that area that's not in favor of their event, but we realize it's going to happen. So only thing that we can ask at this particular point is that we really look into how we're organizing it. Some of the complaints that we have in this, Jimmy Ann is already congested street. We're looking at, I looked at the, the memo, up to 4,000 people are going to be there. It's one thing for us to house that as a parking lot, where NASCAR is in control and they're busting people from that particular place to the Speedway, but we're looking at 4,000 people in that area celebrating, having the events in that area. Personally, us and a few other homeowners, just, we just don't want it. But also, to see the Highlands community, we're the only subdivision that's affected when we do have NASCAR events in that particular area. Because we do understand that the growth is happening and the partnerships are there, and these events are going to take place. The only thing I can ask moving forward, too, is that they invest in some type of way into our subdivision. You know, we have an entrance, and we're the only subdivision with a entrance that has not been cleaned, has not been painted, anything. And so, though we can't fight them on the events, what I would ask is that they look into possibly investing into our area a little bit more. We're the only subdivision without a welcome sign. You know, Cardinal State has one, all the other ones have one, we're the one that don't, we're the oldest one over there. So those are my comments, I hope you guys will look into that, see what kind of partnership resolution will come from it. Because like I said, at the end of the day, those events are going to happen. Thank you.
That was my final public speaker.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, well now move back to item 8C that was pulled from the consent agenda. It's the Public Works Department, Compan Inc., Dickerson Center Playground Improvements, a resolution approving the establishment of a project budget in the amount of $402,400 for the Dickerson Center new playground, seating, landscaping, lighting, fencing, and site furniture, authorizing the purchase and installation of playground equipment from Compan Inc. in the amount of $347,599.87 pursuant to U.S. Communities Contract Number 2017001135, authorizing the city manager to make procurement-related expenditures and approve construction services contracts as necessary to complete the project. Subject to conditions, waiving certain purchasing code requirements to the extent of conflict herewith, approving, authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute all contracts with this resolution, and authorizes the city manager to approve, providing an effective date.
So moved.
Sorry.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from.
Commissioner May.
Commissioner May.
And I don't have any public speaking on this item.
Okay.
I, I did want to just applaud the Public Works Staff and Leisure Services. If you see that the, this resolution goes back before my time here, so it deals with Mr. Chisholm's work that he did, working with staff. We did receive $302,400 from the Racing and Recreation Facilities District. I mean, we had to provide $100,000. Facilities District, I mean, we had to provide $100,000. If, the actual park is going to be one of what I consider a park that will provide access for all individuals, different generational, intergenerational type things for seniors to babies, based on the equipment that the Public Works Staff and Leisure Services that's put in, and not only will it be playground equipment, it would improve the actual parking and the open green space at the Dickerson area, so I think these are the things we've talked about, and so we're keeping in our mind that, make sure that the parks that we're building are not just set aside for one group, but they can be for everyone, so this will be a very good part, and wanted to make sure that it was pulled from the consent so people are realizing that staff has been doing work over the past year to create these destinations for the kids in our community.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything to say about your new park coming in Zone 6?
I am extremely pleased, I grew down, I grew up down the street from this park on Live Oak Avenue, I was a latchkey kid, I crossed Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard with my family's house key close to my chest, the crossguard allowed me to go there, and the Dickerson Center was my elementary school until integration. So I am so pleased to see that we're not only doing something with the grounds, but I anticipate something with the building as well, so that our children that go there for the Boys and Girls Club, as well as the citizens that utilize the facility, will be pleased that we've addressed this particular facility, because we've got new facilities elsewhere, but this one here is grounded, and we're just going to dress it up and make it look better.
That's right.
Mr. Waller, did you have anything?
Public Works Department, we also are very excited about this, and as Mr. Fiecher had mentioned, this is a piece of a multi-phase improvement to the exterior of the Dickerson Center, you know, it began several years ago with improvements to the pool, we just completed a new expansion of the pool deck with shade seating and an entry space for the lifeguards to have safety outside of the weather, and this playground is a part of another item that'll be back to you for award for construction of parking lot improvements, which were the grant, another race and red grant we received and all accepted several months ago, all toll, we're looking at about $2 million in total expenditures on just the exterior of this park, it's going to be a real game changer for the users of this facility, and we're pretty excited about it.
Thank you, Mr. Waller.
Here, here, I want to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Reed as well as the work of the staff, anytime we get a new park, I just get excited, probably what excites me as much as anything, just seeing parks develop in our city, and this is one that, I would say, as a child, I spent a lot of time at the Dickerson Center, and I had a aunt who lived relatively close, and so, and this whole idea of making things intergenerational just shows that we continue to have a commitment to the core of our city in maintaining our facilities and taking them frankly to the next level, so thank you and good job. Oh, we had a motion and a second, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, we'll move on to item 8E, which was also pulled from the consent agenda, it's the City Manager's Office Coronavirus Fiscal Recovery Funds 2021 Programming Plan, this is a resolution, a resolution approving the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Funds 2021 Programming Plan allocating $75,202 of the awarded funds from the U.S. Department of Treasury, authorizing the city manager to implement certain programs, establishing the plan, subject to conditions, authorizing amendment of the budget to adjust revenues and expenditures for consistency with specific appropriations made in the 2021 Programming Plan and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Traeger.
And I do have speakers on this item, Mr. Mayor, our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Malcolm Williams.
John Nicholson, 413 North Cranby Avenue, I attended the listening session, or what should have been a listening session, and it doesn't appear to match what is saying here. One, it's equitable distribution and a positive impact throughout the city, it doesn't go throughout the city. From what I've read in the newspaper and what I've seen in print, it is definitely not citywide, all right? I'm asking you if you pass this, and I'm presuming you guys are going to have discussion on this, because there has been no discussion among you. The mayor chose something, he's giving it to you guys, you're not discussing it, and you're giving away 7 million bucks, and you're not discussing it. So I think there needs to be discussion on who's getting what, when, where, and how. Secondly, there's got to be a verification that this goes throughout the city. Years ago, about 30 years ago, Chris sat in Ruth's seat, and she said, you know, it's been years now, and there hasn't been a public park in Zone 1, and I would like a park in Zone 1, and it's been 30 years and there hasn't been a park yet in Zone 1. So the equitable, you know, it's equitable, it's not equitable. Where the money goes sometimes gets a little bit too much in one area. Last week, or two weeks ago, I made a comment about the amount of money going into downtown, all right? The mayor's looking at me saying, no, 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 not possible. Well, yeah, it's city property that Bron and Brown is putting 28 million on, okay? His document that he set out for his campaign quotes as 30 million dollars into going to downtown. On that agenda, it was 5 million dollars going for the expansion of Beach Street North, so totally, it came back 65 million dollars to downtown, and there's 750,000 dollars spent on B-side, that's not equitable. So when you look at this, I'm asking you to find some way, when it's all said and done, where the money went, who got what, and was it equitable? Did everybody throughout the city, because basically, there's nothing going west of Nova, from what I understand, there's nothing going out there. When is the last time you discussed putting a park west of Nova? From what I understand, all this development's going out there, where are the parks? There's been no parks going out west, we're renovating all the parks inside, but there are people out there that need parks, and we're not planning for them. So when you do this, have some kind of formula that you can make sure that it goes to every single area. Thank you.
The, yeah, go ahead, you can have a seat, she's, no question. Yeah, no.
I have had discussions with you, there has been discussions, a lot of discussions, I'm on myself, I'm not sure.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I have had discussions, many discussions about this money, I'm sure the other commissioners have as well, and there is discussions about parks as well, just to clear that up, okay?
Yeah, stop, stop, you're done.
But it's not together yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've talked, I mean, I've talked from this dais about a park on LPGA, and the fact that there was no park, no place to play basketball, and we have done work west of Nova, because we've redone Suburbia Park, west of Nova, we worked on Derby Shop Park, west of Nova, so it's just, just consistent myths that emanate from, from, from the speakers, or speaker, and it's, it's just not true, and there's no way 65 million, and certainly didn't come from any literature I sent out that said 65 million dollars, but at any rate, that's not relevant to anything. Any, do we have any other questions or comments, any other speakers?
I do have another speaker, it's Mr. Malcolm Williams.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Once again, I am the other side of that coin from Mr. Nichols, I want to say that we have enjoyed being a citizen of this city, of this great city, we have, especially with this process, from you guys' personal workshops to the community meetings, I attended two out of the three, and to see the document come to light not too long after has been an amazing joy. I have been listening to not only the sessions that you guys had, ones that I missed in person, the community, what we talk about on Facebook, but to see all of those things start to come together has been a great joy, and we truly, truly appreciate it. The only thing I would say is, if you take a look into the community youth council portion of it, we, what I read and I looked at, that you guys wanted to limit it to seven youth, I would ask that you open that up to not only our public schools, but our private school, and not technically put a limit on it with our young people that can get involved. I did also note that it is saying it's subject to be developed and things of that nature, but I would ask is that we really go into some details or look into some other emails that we've already sent on the process, the ones I sent back in February are kind of outlining what a youth council could look like in this city, but other than that, I can truly say that I agree with that council being, reporting to the Leisure Services and to help get our young people involved in our community. So I am very appreciative of how the process has happened, and I'm so looking forward to send the outcome.
I think when you said the seven people, it's seven, but it'll be like, other people can be involved as well, right? Like, you'll have one person from each zone, but then you'll have other people that will be able to be involved.
Well, yeah, and the reality is that it has to be developed, you know, and I think, feel free to give staff some more input about it, I too agree that it should be more than seven people, but he's, maybe that's a board, or, but you want to get some representation from all of your schools, and the idea is to develop a youth council that gives us some advice about what the youth would like to see in the community, and it gives them the ability to, and experience in leadership roles, and perhaps most important from my perspective, it allows us to perhaps utilize them in some of our city initiatives, because we have to create new ambassadors, and we want to teach our young people at a young age to be ambassadors for the city, so it could be that when we have a program with Midtown, under the, what is it, when they're singing, Midtown Under the Stars?
Oh, yeah. Midtown Review.
Review, you know, they may be the ones that are there, you know, passing out flyers or literature, or helping people to be escorted, that they would learn how to be engaged and be a part of our city, and if we have events and things that they can contribute to, and there will be other mentoring programs in the community, because as we talk about the, how the money's going to be used, for me, I know that a part of, and it's a part of the money that is allocated to me as the mayor, I intend to use for other sorts of mentoring programs that will expose our kids, and so it can be kind of co-mingled and collaborated with this type of program to expand our kids' experiences. So I think it's, it's a great part of the plan, the overall.
I just want to ask for the record for the enrichment coordinator, we're going to send out RFP.
The enrichment coordinator will be hired similar to regular employees, filling out an application, once we decide on all the criteria, that person will be responsible for helping lead in the Leisure Services area, those different programs up underneath it. All of these positions, the position that we hire will go through the same process, will have to apply with HR, in reference to understanding how people will be able to apply for different programs from affordable housing, rehabilitation, same application process that we do, and it's not only centralized to one zone, it's throughout the city for certain areas.
And then the literacy program for the interns, we're going to put those out to Bethune-Cookman, Daytona.
All of our colleges and universities.
And then the process.
Yeah, and for all of that, the Student Government Advisory Council, our goal is to try to get these young people from our colleges and universities and our schools engaged in the political process that they don't think that government is bad, but they become a part of it, and to help, as the mayor said, ambassadors for the downtown DDA or for things that happen on Beachside or at the Peabody or at the Ben Shop, we want to make sure these students are involved, take the message back from you to their groups of student governments, but also share what's needed in our community.
And back to the enrichment coordinator, 180,000, so that would be 60,000 a year, but.
It's about 40,000 with benefits, so you're looking at that, and our goal, as stated earlier, talking with Drew and I, we've been discussing that, we hope they get more grants to provide more service and help to be able, I'm hoping that they can call Apple and get us some Apple computers for these kids at our different facilities from Schnebly to YSG to Midtown, that the enrichment coordinator just doesn't oversee these programs, but they work to help us in expand technology with Emory Riddle, hospitality with Bethune-Cookman, nursing with Daytona State College, those type of things.
And we do have like the Boys and Girls Club and a lot of organizations already out there, so are we going to be trying to go ahead and help them as well?
Yes, and some of these programs will, some of these groups will apply for that, and there may be agreements or contracts that we may have to actually bring back to the commission when we vet those people who want to do these type of services.
Okay, thank you.
You just mentioned something a moment ago about the citywide rehabilitation program, citywide, you mentioned that?
Yes, there is a, if Drew, you want to come up, it's not going to be centered on one street or one block, these funds can be used for anyone who meets the criteria, so I'll let him just explain that to be clear.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioner, Drew Droosko, Deputy City Manager and Fire Chief. Yes, ma'am. As far as the rehabilitation grants which you were speaking of, and also similarly, our facade grants, yes, they would be, excuse me, they would be accessible to multiple parts of the community, not necessarily just within a CRA like our current CRA program.
So earlier we had a conversation where I said my concern was that we had a rehabilitation program that was citywide, and yet, item 8G, which we moved, had a waiver of permit and inspection fees for a particular area, that doesn't come up yet, but this was the conversation we had earlier, and so the waiver, and I appreciate going from two year to one, I appreciate that, but.
That's going to be requested, that hasn't changed.
Oh, sorry, so the waiver of permit and inspection fees is for a particular area, but the rehabilitation, I'm looking at 8G on the, we moved it, right?
No, this, we're not on that item.
That item's going to come up next.
Okay. So, so this only applies to rehabilitation across the city, citywide, agreed?
Yes, with regard to the 2021 Programming Plan.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
This is that packet we got last week, the report that Drew gave us where the monies are spread citywide and all of the various opportunities for us to be able to do something for our citizens.
Okay, is there?
And I do have a question, the money that differs zones, how are we going to work together? We want to work with.
Once you all make a decision on what you want to spend your money on, we will have to bring that back to, for approval, based on, if we, if you communicate with us certain things, and we will bring that information back to say that there's some crossness that can take place, and so whenever you come up with your idea, you're going to have to get with Drew to make sure it meets the criteria, and if we see that there are more than one individual from the commission, we're going to bring that back to the commission, because they're going to have to vote on, even though it's your money, the expenditure still have to be voted on at a public meeting.
And you guys can talk about it right here, you can just, just like I just told you, I know I want to use some funds to work on mentoring, you know, I was talking about this a little later, we had a very successful vaccine campaign.
Yes.
I mean, it was, just blew us out of the water, and, you know, I would like to use some of the funds to continue that, and so I actually would need that to be on a, on a upcoming agenda.
And I offered, he's already telling, 20, 25,000 towards that.
See, so that's, and we could do, one, we could do exactly, pretty much what we did this time with that amount, you can vaccinate one time 500 people, and there are different ways, this takes time, because you actually have businesses who would, who sort of want to help us, but so.
I would like to use Family Health Source again, since I'm on the board of that as well.
And you're saying that Commissioner Henry, since we're in a public setting, she is trying to find a way to work with her group and her community to do vaccines for kids between the age of, what was it, that you all have worked?
12, 17.
So these are things that we know, that people are talking about, how can we get more grant funding, so if we can get grant funding from outside, we won't have to use that, and I know that her and Malcolm have been discussing that, and working with Drew and Betty to, to execute that.
Malcolm and I are working on a vaccine site at YSG on September.
On September 18th or September 11th, and it is going to be strictly for children, and the Health Department has volunteered to partner with us, and we only need to just let them know how many vaccines are. let them know how many vaccines approximately we think we may be able to do, so it's a good opportunity for children who are at school who have not been vaccinated. So it's going to be at YSG on the 18th or the 11th, and the, we were trying to come up with a way to do the gift cards as well for, for the vaccine site, so if anybody wants to help with that as well, I'm going to use some of mine and maybe anybody else that wants to.
Once you all approve this, if you approve it, we will send out a request to have a meeting with you all to determine what you want to spend your money on, so we can come back and move some of this money fast, and we'll start setting stuff. Our goal is in the beginning of October to have all of our plans in place that we can notify all of the citizens and business owners, and, and move this for, to a centralized location with a centralized individual handling it.
Yeah, I think that children are probably, because many can't be vaccinated under 12, they can't be vaccinated yet, and there are no mask mandates in school, and they have to be at school, they don't have a choice, and COVID deaths are up amongst children, even in, and in the schools, COVID is affecting our schools greatly, and there is more to come, and I was reading the other day that it said, if your child is in school and has not been vaccinated, it's like 99% chance or something that they will contract COVID, so that's why this is something that's very dear to Malcolm and I, that we're, we're trying to move forward, so.
Let me ask you something, if, if we approve this tonight, why can't you start to execute, like, like, you know, part of the plan? We can, we can start executing, if the, if we agree to this general plan, is that not, Drew?
Once again, Drew Drusko, Deputy City Manager, to clarify for you, before you this evening, part of the adoption of this plan outlines certain actions that the city manager could begin to take action on now, there are other items that might be with third parties, those would be contracts that would come before you. This does not waive the city's purchasing code, so anything that would require the city commission action will once again come before you, but yes, we're working on the implementation criteria right now.
Because my point is, if Commissioner Cantu is willing to spend $25,000 to do vaccines, then you, we can start executing that, because what we find is that, because I have a lot of people who are saying they want to sign up, so we, we need to.
Yeah, we'll move that.
Begin executing, and then if Commissioner Henry wants to do one, to get a, get this youth vaccine done by, what is it, September?
September 18th, yes.
Okay, I think you have to move that, and I'm agreeable to support a cause for, for both of those, to continue both of them.
We'll get with you.
And if I could confirm, during this evening's meeting, I did receive confirmation from Department of Health that September, Saturday, September 18th at YSG is good to go, and that means Malcolm, you're in charge of entertainment, so let's get moving.
Saturday, September 18th?
Yes.
Okay, and, and have you discussed the, the amount of your, the gift certificate, or have y'all, y'all discussed all of that?
Yes.
Well, the issue is, you know, if I'm going to partner, how much, because I, you only got so much, and you know, you got to know what you, you know, you already, we all already have a certain set of plans, but I, I will say this to you all, that few things have been more, you know, from the calls that I was on with the Conference of Mayors, and, and even from the Biden administration, almost nothing was more encouraged more than this issue of vaccines. Probably second to that was issues like housing, restoration, those sorts of programs were probably second, but they wanted us to use some of this money on vaccines. So when you get the complaint from people that you're using public funds for vaccines, encourage, incentivize, that was clear from the top.
Actually, that's where the money is supposed to be spent on.
Yeah, so.
But with mine, I wanted to go through Family Health Source, so can you?
Yes, ma'am, we tried to diversify who our vendors are, but we have a great relationship with both parties.
Okay, so.
We'll make sure when they do.
We're thinking, yeah, we're going, Family Health Source on the one that you have, in fact, you can just pick up with what we already had, and continue with that.
Yeah, we'll coordinate with them.
Thank you.
I think ours is going to just be 25, because they're children.
That's true.
And I think that's a nice incentive, 25 for each shot, so that's going to be my incentive.
Okay.
We'll calculate the dollars for that.
We'll calculate the dollars, and I will partner with her, because it's children, I want to support vaccines, so I will do half of whatever it is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
She, 60%, and her 40, I'll.
No, half, half. And if, you know, we have a second round, so, of vaccines that, to finish out the first round, so you have to always remember that in your calculation of whatever it is that you're doing, you would be able to get half of that with 25,000, half of 500, so I want to make certain that part of my money also goes to complete the second half of the other.
And our, the health department, and I want to make sure this is right, is going to bring $10 vouchers, food vouchers for each child, right? They're going to bring $10 vouchers, food vouchers as well, which is a nice gesture.
That's a great gesture, and also I would be remiss if I didn't say, as the ones that we just did, we had a third party who came and was able to, he called me today, and he was able to give 35 or 34 tablets with internet to 34 residents.
Wow.
Who came, they got a tablet that has internet service, and all they had to pay was some sort of fee of $10 for some sort of connection fee, but it will continue with internet service, I think, for a year, and that was 34 additional, and he is going to try to continue to partner with us on future initiatives, so we'll be certain to have him partner with the one that you arranged, okay?
Yeah, I think we need to wait till after the second dose.
And then do a new one, yeah.
Hmm, oh, you mean, after the second dose is done?
To, to go back out and do another one.
On yours, before we start a new.
No, I don't know about that, I think you should, I think we should do another one.
Yeah, we can, no, we, we can coordinate for a new group of individuals, so Drew will work out all of the details and email back out to, to you all, but we can do a total new group, and they'll come back at another time, but this other group knows the dates they're supposed to come back to, but yeah, so it won't be confusing, people will know if this is their first one, it will be based on your contributions from your zone.
Yeah.
And you know, just as, as we have more than enough citizens, and we continue to have vaccination opportunities around town, I am very interested in what Commissioner Henry is doing, and I would think on the Midtown side of town, that perhaps I should do something for those children on this side, because one time it won't be enough for all of the children that we have in this city, so to give them another opportunity, I would like to be able to piggyback on what she's doing in Midtown for children, so let's start planning something like that.
We'll, we'll get with that, just, once you approve it, we can move forward with those type of things.
All right.
And for the record, I, I've said this, but I'm going to say it again tonight, I would also be interested in partnering with Commissioner May to help business owners on MMB, since that is the borderline of both of our businesses, if you are so interested, something that we can discuss openly.
Also, when the next commissioner comes in, I'd be interested in working with them in Zone 2 to work on something for the border of Seabreeze as well, since I share that also, so, yes, is that a special meeting that we call?
Okay, all right, good, do we have, we have a motion, we have a second, you're trying to move them, you have a motion, you have a second, is there any other comment from anyone? Commissioner Trager, do you have anything?
I'm delighted on what, how this is going forward.
Okay.
I have one more comment, it is a new day in Daytona Beach, these funds are going to help us to be able to help our citizens like we could never do before, we never would have had $7,500,000 to do things that we're going to be able to do here. People have been asking, what has the city done for us? They're going to see us do some things. Mr. Fiecher, I'm so glad that you're here with your new vision, Mr. Mayor, your leadership, and all of my colleagues that I work with, we're going to make a difference sitting up here with these monies, and I'm excited about that.
Well, I'm very excited, I agree, here, here, any other? Any other thing I, I will conclude also, but I want to say is, there's no talk of not, this being, it's equitable, because there's an opportunity here, you talk about businesses have an opportunity, homeowners, now, certainly you do have homeowners who may suffer a little more because they have roof repairs, but that's, that's what, that's what it's for, people who are trying to recover from the stresses of these, these times that we're living in, so, great job, and I appreciate you all lining up behind this, what I believe is a good plan. We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries, six, zero.
Okay, we'll now move on to item 8G, which is the final item pulled from the consent agenda, it's the Development and Administrative Services Two-Year Waiver of Permit and Inspection Fees Resolution, a resolution authorizing waiver of development-related fees for rehabilitation and repair projects with an area of the city bounded by Mason Avenue to the north, Ridgewood Avenue to the east, Shady Place to the south, and Nova Road to the west, for a two-year period subject to conditions and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, I did have something there, during some of our discussions, it was brought up that maybe not doing two years, but a one-year waiver might be appropriate to, to boot for, and so we want to make that recommendation to you all, this is something that we can look at other areas to spur economic development, so not, it's not really a mandate for us to do two years, that was what was discussed, so if you want to do one year in that area, that will be appropriate as well, and we can make that change if you, you also desire.
Well, why didn't we, I don't know, I didn't discuss not doing it for two years, I don't know if I, I guess what I would say is, how about we do one year with the manager's discretion to renew it, or bring it back before us to renew it, for a second year? Is that something we, we, I know we talked about this, this issue, it's an issue, so is there a reason, or is someone, is someone having, having an issue with it?
So there are areas in Zone 3 specifically, I was, as I was looking at the map, there are areas on Ridge, right off Ridge, I recognize the cutoff line is Ridge, but there's maybe two blocks beyond Ridge, heading to the east toward the river, that could really use some help also, that's the Mulberry area and the Uptown area, and so my request is that possibly we move that waiver around to different parts of the city, different areas, different zones, so everybody can participate in the permitting waiver and the inspection waiver, that was my thought.
And I don't have a problem with that, however, you have to recognize that this isn't just my zone, this is some of yours, there's also some of yours, and we have areas all over this city that need some attention. This area right here, this soup bowl of Daytona Beach has suffered, been neglected, been bamboozled and hoodwinked for so long, that I think the two years, you got to give the people an opportunity, first of all, to even be able to do something, this is just waiving the, the permit fees and the inspection fees, they still got to get a permit, they still got to make it, make sure it's inspected, we want to make sure that what they're doing is up to par, so they got to get the permit, they still got to have the inspection to make sure that it's done correctly. I think that I'm, I'm, I'm all happy for moving it around to spur some type of economic redevelopment, some economic development, this area needs time in order to be able to do that, and I think two years is more than enough, well, I won't say more than enough, is ample enough to be able to give them something that they have not received in the past.
I agree with two years.
So then, do you have enough funds, go ahead?
No, I, I, I agree with two years, it's good for me, but do you have something?
Do we have enough funds to at least offer something to the other residents? Six months at least?
$450,000, pardon me? It's the permits and the inspection fees, if you wanted to assist them, you can use some of your money, plus we've got the other monies that are there for, for the, make sure I say it right, I always say that word wrong, the French word.
Facade.
Yeah, that, facade. I always say facade, but I know that little.
The money for this is coming from what fund?
The money will use general funds for, to cover those items, as we stated in our discussions, that if, it's, it's to spur economic development, when we discussed earlier with me, myself, and you and Mr., and the attorney, if there is a need to spur economic development in other areas, we will bring that back to the community, to the commissioners to say, this is something we need to look not only between the Nova Road, Ridge Wood, Shady Place, and Mason, but it may be we're going down Main Street, are we going to go Mulberry Street, so, so this is the first initial thing that has been discussed by the elected officials, staff is trying to accelerate some of the redevelopment that needs to take place, but we're not only looking at this area, and we're going to be walking, looking at other areas on B Street, we're going to be walking at other areas from Main Street, out there, as Malcolm said, the Jimmy Ann area for redevelopment of those communities, but right now, working with the attorney, they think that we can do this in this area to spur economic development, and if we see the need to go over two or three or four more blocks, we can always, as a staff, bring that back to the commission and say, we believe now, let's move over to these other blocks, so we're, Ridge Wood on both sides, Nova on both sides, Mason on both sides, can attach to that, all the way up to Shady Place, which I think is the back of our golf course.
And so, for two years, the focus is here, are you saying?
It can come back.
This is what I want to know, is it possible? Do we have to go for two years, I mean, if we can extend it, I just want to make sure that we're not neglecting some other parts of the city, that, that is my concern, I look at this map, and I, I feel for my residents on a regular basis around the Ridge Wood area, and it's just, just a few blocks over, like, two blocks over, would make such a big difference, would make such a big difference that one little community right here, they just fall right on the outskirts.
All right, let me ask you all this, as I don't really, yeah, yeah, somebody's always going to fall on the outskirts, because y'all can go over the, across the river, across the bridge to John Nicholson's neighborhood, and we got a Surfside could certainly use this.
And we're going to come up with that.
And going to come up with that, I just don't think we should inhibit progress in the name of assuming that someone is missing, okay? You didn't get hit this time, or get enclosed in the objective this time, but we're going to come down your street, is basically what I'm saying, we're going to come down, but you have to start someplace, and, I mean, a, a part of me would say, is it harmful, I, I, I don't know what staff did, how, how hard this was to accomplish this, but everything we asked them to do, I know it takes time, and sometimes I go in and work with them on little projects, and I know how much time it takes, you know, it, it is not, you know, free, so, is it too difficult to include those little few streets, or is it too costly? What is it? Because you, you want to mention it, because Commissioner Reed mentioned something, and she is accurate, we have to remember that, you know, if we want to do something extra, that's a part of what those funds are for, but go ahead.
Jim Ross, Deputy City Manager. Fiechers authority and so on, I've been able to work on both of these things, a facade grant as well as a two-year period, and so just from a perspective of the commission, what the commission has previously said, you've talked about, well, why aren't people using the facade grants, or the facade grants, either one, and the fact was, there was difficulty in the things involved in that, there were liens, there was third-party efforts with contractors and other things, at the same time, you've got a neighborhood that, I agree, Commissioner Reed, has been inhibited, and so from the perspective of the boundaries, when I submitted the draft to Mr. Fiecher, I picked the outside boundaries, not to exclude people, but really to create, if you. but really to create, if you will, a pot where things may happen that have been needed to happen. So we've got 100% financing on the facade grants, remove the lien process, and I estimated the cost, if we spend $100,000 in terms of expenditures, probably permit costs is in the order of $4,000 to $5,000 in that sum of money. And, and so it's about roughly 1%. And Commissioner Reed, when you look at the schedule attached to the waiver, you'll see it's an inclusive schedule that weighs virtually everything in respect to the direct costs the city would have. We also deal with variances and that sort of thing, so that can be done. It's a composite program. It isn't that you take a part of it and you spread it somewhere else. Facade grants, the neighborhood, what people have or don't have, and the ability to see if it works. And for really, in some ways, this is an effort to see if it works. And I had arguments, not with Mr. Fiecher, but with internal staff, where they said, well, the matching grant. And I said, you know what? If you don't have $10 to match whatever, it doesn't, you're not helped. That's why it's 100%, and that's why the manager supported that. That's why the waivers are here. And if you spread the boundary some and you see how it works, and I think you have a chance to see then, how do you expand it to make it work better for others? But you start someplace. And I think the commission's been asking for that, and that's the theory behind the two together that was submitted to the manager's consideration for your consideration.
I, I'm good with it as it is. And I, I'll, I'll support something else another day.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
I do have a public speaker, Mr. John Nicholson.
Of course.
John Nicklin, 413 North Granville Avenue. And you're right, Mayor. I was going to ask, why wasn't Beatside included? Because that area is one of the older sections of town. The quality of the homes need this kind of attention. Also, Chris Dawn's area needs it. It's one of the older sections of downtown. So that was my comment. Why weren't other sections included? It was never mentioned, when you read this in the backup, it doesn't say, well, we're going to expand it somewhere, you know, in the future. Doesn't say that. So I have to come up here and say, why not? There are other areas that need this as well. All right? So I'm glad that you addressed that. And with regard to the one or two years, my recommendation would be two years. Because it doesn't really take effect. People don't understand it, people don't hear about it in that first year. And by the time they hear about it, it's too late. You know? Oh, I could have done that. All right? So I'm recommending two years. It's plenty of time to hear about it and get things done. Because it takes a while for some people to come up with the ideas, what they need, what they have to go through, what their neighbors say, oh, by the way. All of that takes time, and I'm asking you to think about two years. Thank you.
Okay. I recommend two years with an option to, to do a third year if it's necessary, as we see how it's going. So, um, is that good? All right, we have a motion, it needs to be amended.
Uh, yeah, a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May.
All right, a motion and a second. Do you all, would you amend the motion?
What's?
What's the motion?
What's been presented is the two-year.
Two years.
Yeah, two years.
Two years, right.
Yeah, and we can just come back and do a third year.
You can come back later and do your third year.
That's good, just leave it like that. Okay. Have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
And that was our final agenda item.
All right, we'll commence with the commission comments. Commissioner Traeger.
I was very moved and touched by your memorial for Mr. Officer Reiner. I know we all grieve at this time. And may he rest in peace and may his family feel comfort in the warmth of our whole community.
Thank you so much for considering the art project in the City Hall. How is it going?
It's, it's going, it's going to go well. Now that you all have approved the COVID relief, we will try, as the students come back, we will start working with those different programs to figure out how do we not only do art here at City Hall, but art throughout the community. So once the staff gets together and start putting things in place and working with these different committees, we'll be bringing things back to you all as it goes forward.
It really warmed my heart that the Hometown News did an article discussing how high school kids were producing some art. And I thought, well, okay, I'm ahead of the curve that we're already kind of working on that. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much, and I hope to be actively involved in that. Also, have we received back the Affordable Housing Report yet?
No.
Okay. Also, Ms. Betty Goodman gave me a very interesting phone call. It was about another little art project that we're hopefully shaping up in Daytona Beach to bring a little spirit to the community. Ms. Goodman, can you tell us about it, please? And I just want residents to know that when they contact me, I take their, their thoughts into consideration. And this was a recommendation and a shared thought with myself and another resident. So it warms my heart to hear it in action.
Good evening. Commissioner May had made a suggestion to the manager about the sign, "I Love." I know all of you have traveled around cities or countries and have seen the sign, "I love" whatever city you were in. So her suggestion was, "I love Daytona Beach." So this is kind of like a feel-good project. So a group of staff members have gotten together and we're working on this project. And I know if you've seen the sign before, you probably have seen lines of people waiting to take the picture with "I love." So we've started working on this project, and we talked about different designs, putting them in different locations throughout the city. So we're looking forward to that. If you have any suggestions that you would like to see the sign placed, let us know. So we're happy about it, and we think it will bring some fun to our residents and to tourists coming to the city.
Thank you so much, I enjoyed receiving my phone call. Thank you.
I'd like to interject, I'm so glad we're doing that. I mentioned that a while back, and we didn't, we didn't adopt it. I talked about how I love my hometown. And we did talk about this, so I'm glad that it's, it's moving forward.
Yes, great. That's a great idea and way to push it on through. Commissioner Cantu?
I just had a couple of things.
Mike, Mike.
Hello?
There we go. I just have a few things. One of them is about ADUs. We have some misinformation out there. And I'd just like to set the record straight. If I could call up Deputy City Manager Morris? I would like you to answer a few questions for me. Um, one of the, can you hear me now? Okay. There was one thing that I heard out there, this ADUs would change the property lines. Is that yes or no?
It's a no.
Okay. Another thing I heard out there, changing, the change in zoning, yes or no?
I'm, excuse me. I'm Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Fiecher. And the first answer to your, your first question, the answer was no.
Okay. And the second one, change zoning?
No, ma'am, it does not change the zoning.
Um, another question I had on that presentation you did, on page three, item 10, it says, "Staff is not recommending ADUs be required to meet the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development standards to be considered affordable housing unit." Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The, another question. Page five on that presentation, number three.
Would, would you allow me to elaborate on the last answer, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
So in respect to the not reference to affordable housing, you've got different sets of standards. It probably creates a big hurdle for people to be able to proceed and do what the commission's intent may be to do, which I think is to allow greater flexibility in the use of your property. When you shift to the affordable component, it sets up different standards. It makes it tougher for people to do. And it's not intended as an affordable housing supplement anyway. It's intended for various reasons, depending upon what a property owner's objective may be.
Okay. Um, another question I have for you. There was some inform, misinformation out there that HOAs and their PUDs would not be protected. And I believe that was on page five, number three, where it covers that.
So in respect to PUDs, or a place where you've got covenants and restrictions, and that may or may not be a PUD. City law is an authorization. PUD documents are zoning for the property, that people buy into that document and that set of restrictions. And you also have covenants and restrictions pursuant to the PUDs almost always. Covenants and restrictions, whether in a PUD or in a private development, are not publicly enforced documents. So you can have authorization under the law to do something, but you could have contractually limited yourself not to do something by virtue of the covenants and restrictions. And, and just by example, if all of you bought into a development and it's all common covenants and restrictions, it starts out with the developer who sells the property to all of you. Each of you buy in, the covenants are there as you buy in. You each, as you buy in, consent to the covenants and restrictions. And ultimately, what you have, you're all the successors to that developer, and you have a contract with one another to be limited and bound by the contract terms you agreed to when you bought into the property. So the PUD restrictions or the covenants and restrictions in HOA or otherwise stay in place regardless of what the law legally permits you to do otherwise.
And just for instance, Pelican Bay, it was created, created in 1979, am I correct?
I think that that is correct.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Now, another question I have for you. I believe the Volusia County Council just passed ADUs a couple of months ago.
The county council, I believe in July, approved their ADU ordinance. And at your request, I obtained a copy of that and to make sure that the rest of the commission had it. When I received it, I transmitted it to Mr. Fiecher and all commission members, as we're directed to do, as far as communication to one commission member, so the rest of the commission is informed.
Okay. And so it's pretty much similar to ours, except we have a little bit more restriction on our parking, correct?
We are more restrictive in parking. The counties has one per ADU. They've got size limits for ADUs. We've created parking based on the neighborhood meetings, actually from Commissioner May's activities, to have parking spaces, one parking space per bedroom. If, for instance, you had a two-room ADU, you'd be required to supply two parking places, and your site plan would require you to demonstrate where it will be and how it will be managed in terms of stabilization. Sorry? It depends on if they do two bedrooms or not. If they don't do two bedrooms, they don't have to.
A, a two-bedroom on an ADU, it could possibly be a mom and a kid. And, and if an ADU is going to be at a person's home, I think two additional parking spaces is, it's absurd. And it's, it's not obtainable mainly for people in my zone. Which, when I brought ADUs up, it was for people in Zone Five to be able to be included. So this basically knocks them off.
So two things, if I might. So it's, it's.
And I knew this was going to happen.
Excuse me, no, let me, let me try to respond, please.
But county council requires one, correct?
They only require one. And so it's a policy question for the commission, whether it's one per bedroom or one per ADU. The question of, and then the, we had Commissioner May's meetings, and there were people that were concerned about it. And subsequent to that, because we started with one per ADU, we added the bedroom requirement, and it's being brought to your attention here so that if the commission thinks it's wrong, you don't pass it. And you have, certainly have the ability. What's presented is what we think you should do, but it's just a presentation and a proposal, and the commission, four votes on the commission changes anything that you want to change. So it's really a question of what the commission thinks is appropriate. And believe me, there's no intent or effort on our part to restrict it to a zone. We're trying to respond to the inputs that we've received as we went through. And we're, we're receiving yours as well, Commissioner. And the counties is one per unit.
And, and if we decide to fix that, we'll fix it. We'll just talk about it.
Okay. And thank you for the clearing up all that misinformation out there. I'm done. Jagger, I have a question for you.
Mayor?
I'm sure you're, hopefully, probably aware of this. I found out recently, there was a state statute passed for granny plats. Could you tell us a little bit more about that for ADUs?
Yes, of course. So there, there is a statutory program that is operated through the property appraiser, through an application process. So the, the statute provides that for costs that are spent to provide for a parent or a grandparent over the age of 62, those costs can offset your assessed value and thus reduce your taxes. So that's in section 193.3, I'm sorry, 730 for anyone that wants to look that up. It's not necessarily related to ADUs. It could be an additional bedroom. It could be any sort of addition for a parent or a grandparent over 62.
And so they would get a tax exemption? And what I've read on there, it actually improves properties that sometimes as well?
Uh, well, that's the point. So you do the, if you do this construction or reconstruction, it would otherwise increase your property value. And this allows you to offset that increase on your taxes.
Okay. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Henry?
First, I want to say that I'm deeply sorry to the family of Officer Reiner and that I too am lifting them up in light and love. And secondly, I want to go back to the accessory dwelling, the ADUs. Because originally, when I brought it to the commission, it was as an avenue to affordable housing. And so now I'm hearing that it, the way it's being set up is it won't be set up as an avenue to affordable housing. And I need to know why, you talked about it makes it more difficult if we did it that way. And I, I'd like some clarity on what makes it more difficult and, and why.
The HUD standards are very numeric in terms of what they make someone do in order to accommodate it. The way that the ordinance is set up now, it can be market rate. So that, and what you have is you have the opportunity then to sell your property, if you will, for the ADU at the price a homeowner may choose to do. So it actually offers more flexibility, rather than having additional restrictions as to how you get there. You could still have the ADUs, still make it affordable. And so the, it actually creates more difficult standards that I think make it less likely people would construct the ADUs if you were using the Affordable Housing Standards. And this isn't a conclusion I came to by myself. It was with other staff members, because a lot of people worked on what you are seeing. And as well as then, we went to the workshops with Commissioner May and so on. And there were questions in respect to market rate and whether, if you had someone coming to your neighborhood to build that particular unit, were you then going to be faced with, whether you liked it or not, affordable housing and however people may perceive that? So there's some stigma attached with the idea that's not necessarily attached to simply the ADU. The effort in the way it's drafted is to follow what we believe to be the commission's direction, which was to make it possible and feasible for people in Daytona Beach to do that without violating short-term rental standards or doing any of the things that create precarious positions for the city and still give flexibility to all the property owners within the city to do what they decide they think they should do. And other than minimum standards in the building code for size, which are pretty small, as you'll see when you look at that, you can build it any way you wish, if that's what you wish to accommodate.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
People use housing vouchers to address Commissioner Henry's concern about?
I think it's a different sub.
I haven't finished my sentence.
I'm sorry.
So in an effort to address your concern about the affordable housing, if it's not HUD compliant, could people use vouchers?
I've got a short answer, which is I don't know the answer to the question. But let me just go a little further in respect to an ordinance that you passed earlier tonight, which has to do with discriminatory treatment and the use of the source of income that you have to pay your rent. So that, as I would anticipate, and I certainly will accept any help Mr. Jagger hands out on this one, which would be that the housing voucher, you would be permitted to use it as compensation. Someone would have to be set up to take it. But you've got an ordinance that you're passing as a local law to encourage people to use the housing vouchers and not to discriminate against someone because that's their source or means of paying their rent.
HUD has certain standards as to size. It would depend on the ADUs to whether it meets their standards. But there's no reason the ADU wouldn't otherwise qualify for vouchers. And we have the Source of Income Discrimination Ordinance, which would prevent that sort of discrimination. So I think those two could work hand in hand, depending on the unit. So I think those two could work hand in hand depending on the unit.
Thank you. More questions, Commissioner?
No, just one, no, I'm finished.
All right, thank you.
And the last thing that I wanted to say is that the Affordable Housing Committee will be bringing back, in the next month, we're going to have some emergency meetings because it is now time for us to submit what we have done in terms of affordable housing and using the money for the chip money for what we've used it for. So we have now have to put a proposal together and get that proposal to Tallahassee. This is the first year that they are requiring that. So we will be bringing that back to the city. I will be bringing those suggestions that they come up with back to the city and let you know what they've come up with. So they have to make suggestions to you all in terms of what they think we should be doing with that money from the affordable housing and from the state.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, sir. Let me just say as your representative to the Volusia League of Cities, that I am extremely pleased to have represented you all this past, along with the mayor, this past weekend at the Florida League of Cities. Everybody that read my badge and saw that my badge said Daytona Beach, Florida, had nothing but great things to say about our city manager, I was almost embarrassed. I made some extremely good connections, and I don't know why, for whatever reason, that the mayor and I were the only ones there. You have an opportunity to grow, they offer us workshops, we heard great keynote speakers, we were just amazed, particularly the opening session, if you were there, to hear the astronaut, engineer, and NFL player all in one. I had to text the city manager about him, and he's already taken it to a whole nother level on what we can do as a city in inviting that young man here. The connections you make, other city commissioners that you can talk to that you maybe can't talk to us, or to glean some ideas from them, and they also offer online courses for us to grow as elected officials. I know you've been there in the past, Ruth, I don't know why you weren't there this time. They have a first-time elected officials course, where you can learn what you can and can't do, just in case you're still a little leery about that. They have courses on the various topics we talk about here around this table that you can come and glean from. It's just a weekend from the Thursday, Friday. Next year, I'm staying till Saturday night, because I missed the closing banquet and all of that. I checked out that morning and I stayed beyond lunch. I made it back and got the Torrential Downpour on the Midtown Motown concert, but I really, really made some great connections that go around. Of course, we didn't have it last year, but I really encourage each and every one of you, it's once a year, it alternates between Orlando and Miami, and I have always, always made some great connections. People continue to email me, we bounce ideas off of each other, what is your city doing? What is my city doing? Not only did I know the gentleman that was elected as the Florida League of Cities president, but we were taking pictures and I was being introduced to the National League of Cities president, and his wife recognized me because her sister played to me at Bethel Cookman. When she said my name, she wasn't even saying my badge, and she said Paula, and I was like, I don't know you. But then she told me who her sister was, and I was like, oh my goodness. So the connections that were made, and they made sure to tell me that the manager and his wife eat with them. So we've got connections, Mayor, with the National League of Cities president. And so Daytona's on the map, just because we are moving forward, we have this new city manager that everyone is very familiar with, we had nothing but kudos at the Florida League of Cities with everyone that I came into contact with on how they anticipate great things coming from Daytona Beach, and I was extremely honored and pleased. I heard your presentation was excellent, Mr. Mayor. Honored and pleased to represent you all, and I look forward to going every year so that I can continue to grow and to better serve the constituents of our city and of my zone. That concludes my comments.
I think that's a pretty good event. They have it twice a year, once a year?
It's once a year. It's always in August, and it alternates locations. This was Orlando.
What is the cost of the event?
We're members.
We're members.
So we don't pay to...
We take care of it.
They take care of it.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
And I want to say this, and yeah, because a lot of times they say, you know, I heard another elected body complaining because the staff travels to conferences or workshops, which I listen to workshops, presentations through the Florida League of Cities, through the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Sometimes I have staff to join me and listen to presentations. If you buy into the myth that because you're elected that you shouldn't be educated, it's just foolish. You will just sit here, and no point intended, but the staff will simply lead you around. You know, and, you know, when I made this statement before Mr. Fiecher was here, at the end of Mr. Manager's, the last manager's tenure, that I was determined that he wouldn't shape me, because he'd been a manager for 30 years. So if you come in as an elected person, then he would just shape you into the way that he thought, and you wouldn't really necessarily have your own thoughts. I'm not saying it just had to be that way, but I was determined to find my own identity as a leader, as an elected person, and to learn things, and to hear from him, but in order to know anything, you have to read and you have to be exposed to things. Florida League of Cities is an excellent resource to us that we are members of, and that I do think that Commissioner Reed encouraged us to be active participants in. And as I said, there are many, many workshops, almost weekly, monthly, that you can go through, and this new medium of Zoom is just open up things to people so that you can learn. So I wholeheartedly reject that as sheer political buffoonery, the idea that we shouldn't be educated and it costs the city money, but we do the work. And you can't do the work if you don't read, and half the ideas that I bring, those 900 ideas that he talks about, 10% of them come from residents, 80, 90% of them come from these sorts of venues, or other mayors, or other commissioners. So I wholeheartedly stand by that. And my presentation, which they asked me to come over and present and share what we were able to do with the enrichment programs through the bootcamps, the mayor's bootcamps, they saw the video, the Florida League of Mayor's president and others, and asked me to come over and present that presentation, and it was well-received. And the agenda for me as it relates to that is to encourage other mayors and elected people to find ways to embrace education in their recreation programs. And that, I think, is an important initiative for me, both personally and professionally. I too would like to say that the few people that I met, and I didn't stay as long as Commissioner Reed, but I want to say that the few people that I met are very appreciative of their experiences with our manager. But I also want to commend our manager on his recent workshop, or retreat, staff retreat, accelerate Daytona Beach. I was able to see the pictures, see the photos, and it was first-class, the staff extremely happy with their experience together. He has, as he has heard from us, started to gather the pulse of the community and understand sort of the vision and the direction that we're trying to go in. Then he has the staff, the idea is accelerate the vision for the city. And I'm just very pleased with that, and what I saw and what I've heard, and pleased with the work overall that we're getting from you thus far, and want to commend you on that. And he also gave two powerful speeches. Guess it must be in the name when they preach, because I heard, I get that a lot, but I heard, you know, the power of his presentations last week, and so want to commend him on that as well. Mr. Jagger, his term is once again up. So this is the Seventh Amendment that I request to the agreement between the City of Daytona Beach and First Step Shelter. I will not be on the board without an attorney, but he has asked Mr. Delgado, who was going to consider, otherwise, if you guys can't help us to find a good attorney, I'm requesting that we be able to continue to have the services of Mr. Jagger until we can find someone else.
This current amendment would take it to November 5th, so we could extend it beyond that, but typically we've gone at three-month increments, so it's up to you all.
That's fine by me. Three months, I don't mind coming back every three months and asking. Are you all in agreement with us continuing? So we need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Need a motion and a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
And if there's any public speakers that would like to speak on this item?
Okay, no speakers, all right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that the editorial that was shared with us by Ms. Murphy, I thought was well-done, well-written, informative, and I was both informed and appreciative of it. I would also be remiss if I didn't say that I never stated publicly that I was in favor of ADUs. I am in favor of affordable housing, but I never stated publicly that I was in favor of ADUs. So I want us to be mindful in our deliberations that we're sharing, to make sure Commissioner May, you know, not to speak for me as it relates to what I'm standing for. That's important to me, because I try to always, you know, I realize that I'm sort of a pushy chair, but I try to always have a conversation, and I try, when I'm out, even if I'm speaking in public, to make certain that I'm saying that this is what I think, this is what I'll be taking to the commission, or the commission has to decide. But I hadn't decided on ADUs, and your editorial, you know, just stated that I was 100 percent... No, I always reserve the right to, and I didn't bring ADUs.
I initiated it.
She brought them, she talked about them a year ago.
She brought it first, and then I brought it up second.
I was still doing my due diligence and my homework, and I always reserved the right to be better informed. And I was challenged and remain challenged by ADUs. I am highly probable to support ADUs when they come before us, but if, you know, I hadn't taken a stand, so I just would appreciate making sure not to, you know, lump me into any category, as I will, I prefer to pretty much stay where I stand. And so the last thing I want to say tonight is, Mr. Jagger, I mean, Mr. Rayner, yesterday was as difficult as the day that he was shot. And I just say that it is our worst, it's one of our worst nightmares. When he was shot, I didn't have words, and last night, it took me until 4:00 in the morning to really be able to craft what I hope was a reasonable statement. But what I will say to this commission and to our city is that hopefully at some point in time, we will be able to do something that pays homage to him, in a way that will be with us for as long as we're a city. And I want it, I hope it is something that is not transformational, that's memorable, and that people will be able to embrace and experience. I have a thought in mind, where I've visited a park over in Deland, and it's an amazing park that I would like to see as a part of our city. You know, and my thought is in the Derbyshire Park, but maybe someplace else if we decide that. But whatever we decide, I'm just making certain that we know that at some point in time, we, I think, should be moving to do something that is a part of our aspiration to be great, that will reflect his name, his service, his sacrifice, and the light that we lost too soon. And so let's be thoughtful of that, and I'm by no means trying to stick us with something at this time, but be thoughtful as a commission and as a staff, because I want something that stays with us. And so that concludes my remarks. Yes, ma'am?
Friend and I were talking about the ADUs and the effect on maybe single-family residential neighborhoods, and he suggested maybe we should limit it to homesteaded properties, so it would not get into a business atmosphere about maybe somebody buying a home and renting it out and putting two more buildings on the property. So he suggested that maybe we should limit it to homesteaded properties where the person is going to be living on the property and having an ADU.
Is it on? Okay, I'm already, if I'm correct, the person has to live on the property, am I...
I believe that's true, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm certain.
So usually the person that lives on the property would automatically probably be homesteaded.
Right, Mr. Morris is giving the thumbs up on that, so it does have to be homesteaded.
Okay, thank you.
Well, even if it's not homesteaded, it's owner-occupied.
Correct.
And that's, okay, yeah.
And since we keep bringing this subject up, we have had a discussion regarding this, am I not correct?
Yes.
We've talked about this, because I've heard from citizens along the same lines as you, they're implying as if we have not, and that we're doing something that's not transparent for the community by not discussing this openly. And that concerns me, particularly if it's coming from one of us. So I just want for the record to say we have discussed this, we haven't made any decisions about it.
Yes.
Staff is still working on it, and as you stated, Mayor, I haven't made a decision either, I haven't blatantly said which way I go. I mean, I've looked at the pictures, I've read the article that we have that came from you, it was very thorough, but it's just something that we still have to consider, came from you, still have to consider. So I want us to be mindful of what we say, that we say it.
And we also have to remember that we have a planning board, and that's a part of the process.
It's went through the planning board already, correct, in fact?
Right, yeah, it's been through the planning board, right? And so we have to remember, that's a part of the process. So to say that it is, you know, we have to make sure that we are representing ourselves accurately. Okay? Is there any other comments tonight? Okay, all right, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, just three items, truly appreciative of the comments that Commissioner Reed made and from individuals from throughout. One of the things that I've been able to do is, with the National League of Cities and the International City Managers Association, is I serve as a coach for city managers throughout the rural and not just throughout the country. The International City Managers Association, I was requested, so those conferences are coming up, and I actually will be doing coaching sessions. And I actually will be doing coaching sessions for one coming up. So that is how people probably know. And until I'm no longer here, it's all about Daytona Beach. So those are the communities that I've served in. That's probably the reason. So when I do go out, I bought my own mask, Daytona Beach, and I wear it everywhere. So I, because I want people to know that's where I'm from and that when I go out, I represent them. Secondly, the staff retreat was a great retreat. And it demonstrated to me the value of the employees we do have here and their dedication to really doing what's good for our community. Now, some, you've got to push a little bit. Some, you've got to say now, we don't have to have on certain blinders. But that's the style, my style, is to make them, make sure they're innovative, that they have ideas and that they take information. And so we did have a great retreat where we did a SWOT analysis of our organization. And we asked two key questions. What do we need to stop doing that's causing problems for the organization? And what do we need to start doing that's going to help people to be successful in there? And all of this information will not only come to you all, but it will be made available to the residents of our community. Because when you have, lead your retreat in January for us to create our goals as a city, I want to make sure that you know what we've stood for. And then we're going to make sure that citizens have engagement also to do that analysis and bring that information back to you all in January. So we know where we're going for. So I will say that the staff is eager to think differently about certain things. And those that don't want to think differently will help them find other places to think elsewhere. But we are doing great things. We're changing some of the, you'll see in the document, we're changing some roles and responsibilities that people are tapping into. And they may change over. And I'm going to take their advice. If they tell me that it's not working, let's sit down and figure out how we make it work for all. So that has been great for us. And so I appreciate the staff and the work that we're doing. Did want to let you all know that tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. will be a wreath-laying ceremony for the community for Officer Rayner, which will be at Valor, at the police headquarters. So if you're planning on attending that wreath-laying ceremony, they're going to have his vehicle out there in front of the police headquarters with the wreath. It just came out. Please let me know, because it's for the entire community. And it will be a lot of people probably in attendance. And I want to be able to communicate to the chief if you're going to come out there for that ceremony tomorrow so we can make sure we have places for you. Other additional information, reference to funeral and memorial services is going to be placed on, if it's not already, on the police department's Facebook page. But I think it's going to be some private ceremonies and not large ceremonies. And this is all at the request of the family. So you'll need to get that information. And one more thing. I think that's it. The deputy chief was here, was going to say something about her. She has really helped the police chief during this trying time to keep the operations going while he's been working with the family and coordinating. So I wanted to just commend her for her work. But she had, looked like she had an emergency to step out. But that's when you have a great team of individuals that you're able to do your things and the operations continue to go forward. And she's been able to do that for him during this trying time since he's been the police chief. So, thank you.
Good, good. Mr. Jagger?
Nothing further, thank you.
All right, we will hear from our residents, our beloved residents this time.
Okay, our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Kenya Griffin.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. Mr. Feacher, thank you for the retreat for the employees. We have not had that since Carrie Smith, and it's nice to see them come back. Secondly, when I got here in the 80s, we were just having Take Part Two. It was a group of citizens that got together, and they recommended that we have two additional hotels on the beachside. We have a parking garage, a water park, and a theatrical center built. Well, they're all built. Instead of two, we have three hotels on the beachside. We have our parking garage on the beachside, our water park. So I'm asking you to consider having a Take Part Three for the City of Daytona Beach. It fits in well with what you're doing with the coronavirus. It fits in well with your ability to increase the different areas of the city. That Take Part Two was just for Daytona Beach proper on the beachside. But I think the MMB corridor needs to be considered. And downtown is three-quarters of the way through of what they want to be when they're finished. So I think a Take Part Three would be great for the city. With regard to funding, we really don't, we're a donor city. People forget that years ago, there was a Florida Forever. About 40 years ago, we collected funds to buy property, okay? We, as a city, contributed four, five million dollars to that and got back $850,000. The city got the land facing Nova Road for Museum of Arts and Sciences. That's all we got, all right? And in the last 40 years, we have gotten not a cent out of Florida Forever or Volusia Forever. We have to think about all the money that we're giving. We need to get some money back. And lastly, Mayor, you're not listening to me. I absolutely, positively said $28 million came from Brown and Brown. I absolutely said that. I absolutely said $30 million on your brochure, not $65 million. If you add those two, it comes out to 58. If you add the $5 million for the expansion, you're up to 63. $65 million is not unheard of. $3 million for the seawall. That money is there, plus, all right? It's just an example of the imbalance. That's all it's talking about. It was needed. Hopefully, there's more coming in, all right? I would have preferred having the city hall rebuilt down there for the synergy.
So you can tell us if we could spend $100 million, Mayor?
I don't care. Mayor, if it's needed, it's needed, all right? But what's fair is fair. Money is down beachside, it is not. Have a good night.
I don't say that, and I agree that we could spend more on beachside. Okay.
Our next speaker is Kenya Griffin, and on deck is Malcolm Williams.
Good evening. I just want to start by saying I have been at this since 2018. In June of 2018, I've said this before, Brownie the Dog got a whole statue and a memorial on Beach Street. We spend advertisement dollars for people to come and visit Brownie the Dog's memorial. Three months after Brownie the Dog got the memorial, I came before this platform and asked for Sunnyland Playground to be renamed the Linda K. McGee Community Center. I'm getting emotional because I really think that nobody is understanding that you need to give people their roses while they are living. Linda has taught that to everybody she has come across. I love Norma Bland with every being of my body. She saved my career back in 2005. But she has no clue that we loved and respected her the way that we did by naming that field after her at Derbyshire. She doesn't know that. She has no clue that that was done for her. Although the policy states that they would rather not name city property after the living, we still have people that are living with their name on city property. I went through every hoop that I was asked to go through. And I still have not gotten a concrete answer on why. Simply why hasn't it gotten to the agenda? I've done everything I've been asked to do. Linda had to go and do a background check. Linda spent 39 of her good years working for the City of Daytona Beach. And she was asked to do a background check. Linda doesn't even have a parking ticket. I felt it was insulting and belittling. All I want to know is, why hasn't it been put on the agenda? I've done everything I've been asked to do. I've emailed, I've emailed, I've emailed, and I don't even get responses through emails. Is there a policy on email communication? Like, do we have to not respond to people? I know the commission does. I've seen that. But city employees, they don't have to respond to people when they email?
Thank you.
Commissioner Henry, we've been talking about this for two and a half years. She's right, or three. Your time is up. I got you now. Okay.
2018 to 2021 is only three years.
But even if it's three years, four years, two years, six months, we, this is something that I wanted to vote on. So I don't know why, and I'm not blaming you. I'm just knowing that you've talked about it from up here. I don't know what to hold up here.
Well, I'm going to say, Mr. Mayor, that I did agree to run with this. And it took a while with the paperwork. Norma Bland's paperwork was really fast. Her family pretty much had everything completely done in a short amount of time. So that's probably why hers seems like it took precedence. It didn't, they just had everything already together. The second thing is that when I talked to Ms. Goodman today, she told me that the packet was together, but we're trying to see if they wanted to, if we wanted to wait for a Zone Two, new Zone Two Commissioner, because the Commissioner usually runs it. So...
Oh, because the Commissioner usually makes the recommendation.
Right, and we don't have a Zone Two Commissioner. So the packet is completed from...
Go ahead. Please, please just keep decorum in the chambers. Please don't speak to the other folks. Let's just let decorum be.
So that was the last that, I know Ms. Griffin had contacted me and said that she was told that I already had all of the paperwork, which I don't have all of the paperwork. I don't have any of the paperwork. I wouldn't have the paperwork. But I was told that the packet was prepared. And... So when the packet is prepared and when we have a Zone Two Commissioner, we'll move forward. I can see that it's frustrating because, you know, you want to see something happen. But this isn't something that's mandatory. It's not something that we absolutely have to do. I mean, we can vote to do it and decide to do it, and we can run with it. But it's not something that we're neglecting the city by not doing. We're not not doing our jobs by not doing this. Absolutely, I believe Linda McGee should be honored. She is just the light of the city to me. I absolutely believe that, which is why I took it on as a project myself. And nobody else said they were going to take it on as a project. Nobody else opened their mouth. I said I would take it on as a project. So I just want to say that I still want to take it on as a project. And I still, it's something that I still would like to see. But at the same time, it is not something that the city is neglecting any particular person by not naming a park after a person in the amount of time that a person thinks that that amount of time, that it should be done. And... When the city has it ready, and they bring it back, and we have a Commissioner, and we go with this new Commissioner, then I hope that that can happen, you know? Yeah, and that's what I have to say about it.
Okay, I just wanted to get clarification, and that's understandable. And it is an accurate assessment to say that we didn't, we don't have to do this. This is a choice that we're making, and it takes time sometimes for things. Okay. All right. Next?
Our next speaker is Malcolm Williams, and on deck is Sharice Boyd.
Good evening, once again. I'm just a happy guy today. This is throwing me off. One of the things that the new manager has been asking when he got here, he asked the question, what is our brand? And ever since you have been here, Mr. Manager, I can tell you that I have been seeing the product of that. So I publicly wanted to thank Public Works, who have cut down the trees, gone down Jimmy Ann to the mall, that has made it just more beautiful. People are jogging without having to go in the road, without having to go in the grass. I am six feet tall. I walk that way sometimes as my exercise. And I've had to do it because those trees were just horrible. But I've seen Public Works in Zone Five more this week than I probably ever have in 20 years. I ain't going to say 20 years, but I'm just being dramatic. But it has been a joy to kind of see that. I've saw them out there working in Cedar Highlands with our weeds and stuff like that. So I can tell you that we are very, very appreciative. Some of the things that we were talking about earlier with the youth commission, I just wanted to kind of just put that back on and check out the February 3rd email that I sent that talked about ambassadors, that talked about putting our young people in charge of certain events. And I would love to see them in charge of the National Night Out. I think Daytona has failed on the level of what the National Night Out could be, especially when it turns of our young people and our cops. Last thing I wanted to say, Ms. Reed, Zone Six is up and coming and doing great things. And one of the things that we have done in Zone Five is that we've had a open-door communication and relationship and friendship between myself and Commissioner Henry that has done great things and has worked wonders. And I'm very appreciative of it. Sometimes it's fate, sometimes it's destiny, whatever, it's just happened. So I would say to you, you know, Ms. Henry, Commissioner Henry has a Malcolm Williams, but there's a Destiny Williams in the back over there who would love to partner with you. And there's a Sharice Boyd over there that would love to partner with you in Zone Six. I would love to see some of the things happening that we have in our community, be more stronger, more wiser. Because at the end of the day, we just make stuff a little bit better. We have been enjoying what we have been seeing and how we have been advancing in Zone Five. And with the vaccine event, we're going to be working hard with Voltran to see if we can get some free passes or whatever we can do on that side with the county to help. If they present a Voltran picture or flyer, they'll get free shuttle on that particular route. It's another thing that we're working on. So thank you guys so much for all you've been doing. See y'all in two weeks.
When this meeting is over, I'm calling Malcolm on the phone. He can expect my call because in our group, the Zone Five Action Committee, whenever the city is out working, I post pictures of where they are and where they're working every single time they're out working. And so maybe he hasn't seen that in our, me and his Zone Five Action Committee group. But he'll get a call.
Ms. Boyd?
Okay, Sharice Boyd, City of Daytona, address is confidential. And here we are. I have a permit I got today for an event I'm having on tomorrow from 4:00 to 9:00 on MLK and Park Avenue. I started this process three weeks ago. It was the last week of July. I was calling, leaving messages. I came up here a couple of times, didn't get a response. No fault to Ms. Askew, because she explained to me she was on vacation. And I guess there's no one that does her job or checks her voicemails while she's gone. So literally, I didn't get a call back from her till Monday. She called me Monday, she said, okay, I have this stuff. She emailed me, everything was fine. Long story short, I have this. The issue that I want to report to you, sir, as the city manager is, I had a document notarized by...
Kim, right there.
With the purple dress on. And it was notarized by her. I was told by Ms. Askew, by her boss, Dennis, that I could not have this notarized by a city employee because it wasn't official city documents. I don't even know how that makes sense to say it. Nevertheless, they were going to send me back out with the man, Mr. Steve Brown, to get this re-notarized at Am Scott is where we were referred. I said, I'm not doing it. I had to show my butt, basically, for you all to stop and say, wait a minute. It is a legal document. She notarized it, she identified the person. And Dennis came back, and he was like, oh, there was a mistake. The problem with that is not so much that it was fixed for me, as after I told people about this, so many people said they did the same thing. So there's an issue for you, sir, to address. Second to that is, one, as for the vaccine, everybody, people will get it if they want it. You don't have to bribe them, especially poor neighborhoods. That's a horrible way to do that. People will get it, and parents will take their children. But to bribe them with $25 and $10, like, that doesn't make sense. People are going to get it if they really want it. Don't do that. That's worse than the military recruiting in poor neighborhoods with Walmarts where people don't have opportunities. You know people will do it for money. Next is, you asked the question, what was the cost for the membership or to go to the event? It was not answered. I would like to hear that answer, please. And you said, because y'all are members. Well, what is the cost for you all to remain a member?
member? And Mr. Mayor, you said that you now want to follow Mr. Chisholm's whatever model? He had this whole room and city following his model. That's why we're glad he's gone. You are doing a phenomenal job and please continue the good work. Lastly is, Danette Henry, Commissioner Henry, thank you for having that meeting with Heather Post. It was something in the town hall. No one's been doing that and we hope that all of you take that lead and continue to do that work with the city and the council to build something and identify the needs for the city. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Frederick Brown and on deck is Larry McDermott.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, not confidential, Daytona Beach. I really like that, accelerate Daytona Beach. Fantastic. Let's just add three words for next year: with sustainable energy. Think about it. Mr. Mayor, like you, I get real excited about parks. I think that's great. You've done a lot of things for parks. But I get very unexcited when public land has been given away. And I see a smile and a chuckle, but it's not funny to those of us in Zone One, as it was pointed out, we don't, we're not getting parks in Zone One. It was the only access we had to public waterway and it was given away for the benefit of the son of a former mayor through an application that was improperly filled out. Now, I'm saddened that a very good letter was written by Attorney Metz that was not responded to and I believe you all received a copy. Some of the citizens, and I know one in particular, visited City Hall and was given misleading information, uh, there was no argument there. There was a heck of an argument there. I also heard about some of the developments, planned unit developments, you know? This whole land was given to the public in 1926, before any of us were here. And it was just taken away for nothing, for the benefit of a private person to increase the value of his property. That's wrong. The citizen was also told that if he used his public property, that he would be arrested for trespassing. And I know there was a discussion about that earlier and I know, Mr. Mayor, you talked about that, that, oh, if it's public land forever, which is how it was deeded, you're still going to have access. So I'm a little confused by some of that. But since I only have fifty seconds remaining, I'm going to also point out the fact that this public land was never municipal land. You can go back to Volusia County and you can read the records. Mr. Jagger, I certainly recommend that you do that because public land is covered under the Florida Statute, it's Title 18, and I'm sure you're aware of that. And it says in 270 and in 253 about how public land disposition is supposed to be taken care of. And for one thing, it's supposed to be with notification. And as you know, this was slipped in, under the cover of night of COVID when no one was allowed to attend the meeting. There was no notification to any of the citizens that this public land belonged to and it was given away. In six seconds, six seconds, go back and watch the video. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patricia Hurd and on deck is Destiny Williams.
Good afternoon again, almost night. Excuse me, the time has...
Started.
Well, I'll, I'll just sit down until you put it back on three because you started before I even say good afternoon.
Let's give her three minutes, Ms. Hurd.
Okay, there you go.
Give her about five seconds.
You know I'm going to speak.
Give it to you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Patricia Hurd. I'm here to indicate that I'm concerned about the speeding in the city, especially on MLK and MMBB. We must do something about it. I'm bringing it to your attention so you all can do whatever necessary about it. There are people who, who don't know that they don't supposed to go around on, on double yellow lines. They are speeding and everything, okay? I, I'm also concerned about the street on MMBB. Who's in charge of that being painted? The bricks and things there in front of Bethune-Cutman and the humps. On Green Street where the kids turn, they don't know what the long white line is where it's a stop, everybody just pull over the line. That is not the stop sign of where you're supposed to stop. And I suggest, I don't know, that there be a class for, for freshmen or anyone with cars up there to go through a forum when they come with their cars. Because I don't know, do they still give out driver's ed books or anything? I'm serious about this because someone is going to have a terrible accident soon. And I would like for the commissioners get together and come up with something. I also would like to say that commissioners, I put in your box that we at Shallow Missionary Baptist Church is having vaccine on Sunday. That's the first one and the second one is Wednesday, September the fifteenth. So Sunday morning, blessings, get the vaccine to save lives. Better safe than sorry. Have faith, vaccinate. Don't hesitate. Vaccinate. See you Sunday.
What's the time?
Oh, ten, ten AM to one PM. Thank you.
Both days?
Yes, both days. You'll be receiving more information. Thank you.
If you can turn it off.
You had seven seconds left. Our next speaker is Destiny Williams and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
Good evening, Destiny Williams, 809 Cottle Circle. I wanted to thank Commissioner Reed for addressing the speed bump issue on Lockhart. You got them away. I will say that they have taken advantage and they are speeding, ripping and running through Lockhart, so I'm excited for those speed bumps to come back. In regards to the vaccines for the children, I think maybe that could be seen as a preventative maintenance, I'm not sure, but I think it would also be helpful for not just the kids but for us, everyone in the community. If there were regular, maybe health summits, community gardens in the zones so that the children can realize the importance of vegetables and fruits and eating healthy as well as their parents so that when things come like this, we can kind of be on the upper side of it. I also wanted to mention, Mayor, you said that only 10% of your ideas come from your residents, the rest come from your conferences. That's kind of disappointing because you have a lot of residents that have a lot of things to say, a lot of good ideas that would help and benefit the city and the various zones. So I don't know if you're not listening or if they're not comfortable to come to you, but that was just disappointing to hear. And as it pertains to the Main Street with the businesses and the TBAs, I'm not sure, but I wonder if that applies to the businesses on the Ave because they do have vendors doing Bike Week as well. Would that be an incentive to open up those buildings or to fix up those abandoned buildings? If they want to get permits for vendors, you got to be open for a year or you have to be up kept? I'm not sure if that's something that can be considered, but thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Destiny, and I would concur with you. I think that 10% is a little low, probably a little, little high, would be 20 or 25%, but I try to be open, but I do agree with that, that that would be low. Yeah.
Our, our final speaker tonight is Marjorie Johnson.
Oh, oh, save the best for last. Let's go.
Marjorie Johnson, on 22 South Peach. I'm here tonight to commend the city manager on his accessibility to the residents and he's came to the neighborhood meeting, redevelopment outstanding. We need the rest of you to be accessible and at this time, you're not. I was at City Hall and there was a man looking for you, Derek. He'd been trying to get in touch with you for six, seven months and he said you had not been accessible. You're here to represent the people. You're in the one city, one vision. At one city commission meeting, I was harassed by the police, by Allison Fay Brown, by Kim Gadsden, as I went to sit on the second row and distance myself. Tonight, the same thing. Your job is not to tell people where to sit in City Hall. This is a public building and we are taxpayers. The chief of police was told a blatant lie on me that I sat in a little boy's seat, lapped by Yvette Presley who brought a little child in here, he's telling me to shut up. And she's calling somebody from behind to come and sit in a seat that was my seat. So now we're having problems with people telling people where to sit. This is not one city, one vision. This is discrimination. This is harassment, just like it was when you took us out of the meeting and put us at the end until I came to this podium and addressed it and have you to put it back. And the only reason it's there is because of this city manager that the Lord sent us to correct an injustice and discrimination. So I like to say to you tonight, our streets in Midtown that need to be paved. I've come to this podium before and told you about them and right in front of Bethune-Cutman needs to be paved. Mary McCall Bethune was alive today. She would say, you pave this street, take the humps out, take the cracks out. Canida Mae, that is your zone. That desperately needs to be done. Also, on, on, in my zone, Peach Street, Live Oak, where you grew up, Polery, all cracked up, lumps in the street, the street needs to be paved. Wallace Street, there's trash out front of your hand in front of that house that you were supposed to tear down. That needs to be picked up. And also, Maple Street needs to be paved. It's in really bad shape. We need you to be about the people's business. We don't want to be harassed when we come in City Hall. You're here to do the people's work. We, the willing, led by the unknowing, are doing the impossible for the ungrateful. We've done so much for so long, we're not qualified to do anything if nothing.
The best is yet to come. Laugh often, Daytona Beach. Good night.